Good evening. Try that again. Okay. Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of March 19, 2020 to order. For those who would like to join me and are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Holsteg.
Here.
Mayor Kors.
Here.
All councils present.
City Manager, are there any presentations this evening?
The only thing I would like to note, Mayor, you'd asked for an update on the census. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the census. And could I have the one slide, please? Thank you. I would just, I think it's important to note that, obviously, as of March 18, the census, they did suspend their operations for two weeks until April 1. April 1 is the date that the census was actually supposed to launch. And up to date, more than 11 million households had responded. But the key thing is that even though they have suspended, what they're strongly encouraging is to ask everyone to complete their census online using their desktop computers, laptops, smartphones, tablet. They also can respond by phone or mail. Obviously, there won't be any activity from the Census Bureau personally contacting homes as we monitor the COVID outbreak, and they will adjust that as we move through time. But that's the update as we are. So they won't be doing their normal activity, but they are still asking everyone to respond through online electronic means or by phone. Thank you, Mayor.
May I add, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. So the census continues to be really important for our city, to get federal funding dollars and to know how many residents we have. I got my census form in the mail. I don't know if anyone else did. People are bored at home. It's a perfect thing to do. It took me three minutes online to do. So highly recommend that our residents fill those out right away and get them in. That saves resources from the government to actually send out workers, and we might not be able to do that soon. So really helpful, the more people who can fill it out online.
Great. Thank you very much. So the next item is acceptance of the agenda. Before we do that, for the benefit of the public, please note that Item 1F, related to animal breeding permit regulations, Item 3A, related to electrical vehicle charging stations, Item 4A regarding bike share programs, and Item 5A related to climate change have been moved from the agenda and will be rescheduled for a future meeting. The City Council will now discuss the order of the agenda. May amend the order and urgency items. No abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items any council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote?
I'd actually like the city manager to just go over the consent calendar before we vote on it, because there's a lot of expenditures there, and I just want to hear more about it so any of these can be postponed, and so we kind of have a better sense of what's going on with our all of this. Or if there are things that really need to be approved, I just want to be able to get some input.
Yes, Councilmember Garner had indicated, based on the potential budget shortfall that we're going to experience because of the virus issues, if there are things that should be potentially postponed. In my discussion with her, she had asked me to explain several of the items that you have on your consent calendar are for projects that are in the process, ready to be funded. A couple are merely for approvals of design for some projects. The question was, do we have discretion in these, and should we withhold what these expenditures are to get a better idea of the budget? My recommendation at this time is several of these are in different funds, such as like the gas tax, which that money can only be used for certain projects, such as roads. Projects like that should probably go forward. We have the chiller at the yards. That one does need to go. Several are more of an emergency-type basis. The one that could be discretionary, so for example, I would ask you to take a look at Item V. Again, that's surfacing of the pickleball and tennis court resurfacing. Now, certainly something like that could be postponed, but again, that would be council's pleasure. These are projects that, at this point, have been funded.
So do we want to pull that one, V, for separate discussion and vote? Or Councilmember Garner, is there something else you would still like to pull in addition?
I'm not as concerned about that one, obviously, because it's not that much money. But I'm just thinking in general, if we wanted to just wait another couple of weeks. But if I'm the only one on that, then I guess that's the way it is.
Maybe I can clarify. Marcus, are there any things specific here that if we did wait until the following meeting, it would be especially a problem?
We could postpone all of these if you wanted.
So if I enumerated what those were, it would be 1... Although 1E, I would, okay, it'd be 1D, 1E. With 1G, I would go forward with, and 1I, because that is the actual upgrade to the phone lines. 1J...
Dr. Reddy, I would recommend 1H proceed.
Yes, 1H is proceeding. And Marcus, on 1J, I would recommend we proceed with the fire sprinklers at the water plant. So 1J would proceed, 1L would proceed. That's the gear for the firefighters.
1K can proceed. That's an acceptance. So that project's completed.
1R could be held off, 1S could be held off, and 1V could be held off. 1X could be delayed, and...
Right. And we're talking two weeks until we can have more time to have the...
The chiller, Marcus, the chiller at the city yard.
We can wait two weeks.
Wait on 1Y. I would recommend we go forward with 1BB. That's an order that we have at the airport for environmental. And on 1CC, that is gas tax, so that would not affect the general fund. That would not assist us in any way. So I'd recommend go proceed with CC.
So let me check. So the ones that we will remove from this agenda and you'll bring back at a later date, no sooner than two weeks, is 1D, 1E, 1R, 1S, 1V, 1X, and 1Y. Is that correct? Okay. Anything? Sure. 1D, 1E, 1R, 1S, 1V, 1X, 1Y.
I had a question about 1D, as in dog. So that's authorization for the Keyless Entry System for the fire stations. So I just had a question about public safety, if that's something that we need to delay or if that's so important, especially in a pandemic where people need quick access, if that's something that should go forward.
So that project will ultimately be approximately $450 to $0.5 million. So it is a large budget item. It's budgeted. So currently, right now, in this phase, those facilities, Marcus, refresh our memory, they're lock and key?
Correct.
And this obviously would go to the electronic reader. So it's certainly recommended that we go forward at some point. Is it something that, given the situation, that we could hold off on for at least two weeks? Yes.
I don't know if our fire chief, did you have anything else to add? You came in to the room. Be good to hear from you.
So the only thing that I would say regarding that is we've had, and actually, we have a conference call every day with our labor group on our pandemic plan, and they are concerned about people breaking into the fire station to steal our masks and our medical supplies and things that are of value to the community. So I might take that into consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So is there a recommendation there about what to do with that item?
I guess I have a question. Once we authorize it, how long will it take before this is put into place?
Well, and that's just, this item is just allowing us to go out to bid. There's no cost incurred. So you could proceed with the item, and then we'll get a bid at some point later in the year.
Yeah. If there's no cost to doing it, I think what I heard from Councilmember Garner, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is we don't want to expend money that we might not expend if we find we have, you know, to find $50 million of cuts. Right? And we don't know what that number is yet. So if it's not costing money to move things forward, I think we should move them forward.
So then I'd also suggest Item S. It's approval of on-call agreements. There's no costs incurred. It's just setting up various agreements with the planning department to utilize consultants.
Okay. So 1D was the Keyless Entry?
Correct.
With no cost to keep it moving, and 1S is no cost. So the ones we would be tabling or taking off the agenda are 1E, 1R, 1V, 1X, and 1Y. Is that what everyone has?
Yes. Can we just get a minute to review those and reread the summaries?
I would also note, Mr. Mayor, if I could, 1S, the Professional Services Agreement for Historic Reservation Resource Assessment. There's no cost to us on that.
1S, yes, we took that one off.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're taking off the ones that have costs that we talked about. Let me look at these.
Could you explain 1Y for the chiller in more detail?
The city yard, that air conditioning and chiller system has completely failed. So we, I believe, are renting one, or it's literally ready to fail. So the idea was to get it replaced before we get into the summer months. So it is funded. Let me double-check the staff report. It's a Measure J-funded project.
Right. I remember that. I'm fine with delaying for two weeks or continuing all of the items that the mayor read off.
I think that chiller is something that needs to get moving. We are going to be in... I think 1Y is something we should act on this evening. The chiller is failing, and it is going to be hot before we know it. These are funds we are definitely going to have to expend.
It would be good to know how much it is to rent versus replace, given we don't know our economic situation. I don't know if you know that, but is two weeks waiting to make this decision going to have any impact?
Yeah. Let's go ahead and wait two weeks. It won't delay it too long.
But it would be good to know if, you know, if things get as bad as they potentially could financially, what renting would cost versus buying, so at least we have that information. But definitely bring that one back in two weeks, because summer will be here before we know it. So good point, Councilmember Middleton. Okay, if there's nothing else, it's 1E. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember.
Oh, go ahead. You're just confirming that. I didn't want to not pull something, but make a comment on it whenever that's appropriate.
If it's on consent calendar items, now you'd have to pull it for discussion or comment, so...
Okay, then I want to pull CC.
Pull 1CC. Okay. So I'd like to entertain...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If the City Council regarding 5C, by a 4/5 vote, would make the findings that the matter came to the attention of the City Council after the posting of the agenda, and there's urgency to take action before the next meeting.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Holsteg.
Seconded by Councilmember Middleton.
Seconded by Councilmember Garner. We'll need to do a roll call vote, since it's being done by teleconference, Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Holstage?
Yes.
Mayor Coors?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0 to add 5C to the agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so now we're back to a motion to accept the agenda without items 1E, 1R, 1V, 1X, 1Y, which are being continued, and 1CC being pulled for separate discussion and vote. So is there a motion? Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Holstage. Seconded by Councilmember Middleton.
Councilmember, Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Holstage?
Yes.
Mayor Coors?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Great, City Attorney Ballinger, can you please provide a report of our closed session?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and members of the public watching at home, the City Council met in closed session earlier this afternoon and discussed the items that are listed on the agenda, there was no action that was taken that's required to be reported under the Brown Act.
Great, thank you very much. So the next item is public testimony, this time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing items, agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker, you're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note the testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. Tonight, the City Clerk will be contacting speakers via telephone, City Clerk, please begin.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Bell, this is Anthony calling from the City of Palm Springs City Council Meeting, letting you know that you have two minutes to make your public comment.
Right now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is David Bell. I'm calling on Item 1Q. I'd like to express my gratitude to the city at this time by granting the tow providers relief by eliminating the annual administrative fee. The staff report, Exhibit B, page 13. The city is proposing to keep Palm Springs tow providers at the lowest rate in the Coachella Valley. The proposal to make this already suppressed rate from an hourly rate to a flat rate could possibly make our towing rates the lowest in the nation. The staff report, top of page 4. Vehicles towed is evidence under the California Vehicle Code 22655.3. 22655.5. Storage authorities should be charged a VTAC fee if the perpetrator of the crime is guilty. I believe the police department should make the discernment. Victims shouldn't pay, and the criminals should pay. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bell, we'll disconnect now.
Thank you.
I will.
Hello?
Mr. Terrell, this is Anthony, if you're watching the council meeting on TV, if you could please lower the volume, and you can begin your public comment now, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Gardner, Councilmember Middleton, and Councilmember Woods, you're providing that capacity and strong leadership that will get this community through these uncharted waters, leaving no one behind. Your proposed actions tonight embodies that spirit in keeping you, our brothers and sisters, in your homes, saving your businesses, and most importantly, saving lives. Even though I agree with your approach on Item 5C, I would like for you to consider some ideas that I placed in the public record, like creating a temporary rental assistance program, or adding to the moratorium, commercial eviction, or considering this idea. The current outbreak of COVID-19 has the ability to disrupt development projects through cost increases, labor shortage, and other factors. You should consider an emergency ordinance for one year tolling land use entitlement. This action would provide an extension of time for commencement of use of entitlements that are subject to time limits. Also, you should consider the creation of a grant to cover 40% of payroll costs for two months on small businesses with fewer than five employees. With so many folks living paycheck to paycheck, we know there will be extra stress placed on many who simply cannot afford it. This common sense measures will help keep people in their homes and prevent the even greater public health crisis that mass evictions and foreclosures can create. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Charles, we'll disconnect now.
Hello?
Hello, Mario Gonzalez?
Yes.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting, if you're watching the meeting at home, if you could please turn down the volume, and you'll have two minutes to begin your comments, beginning now.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Managers, Staff, my name is Mario Gonzalez, 30875 Date Palm Drive, Cathedral City, California. I'm a local full-time resident of Palm Springs area for the past 42 years, I've been a small local business owner for the past 38 years. My son and I are the owners of El Patron Crafted Tacos and Drinks Restaurant and Palm Canyon Tacos, and we are the owners of GHA Communities that currently have two home developments in full swing in Palm Springs. We are all experiencing unprecedented times, most of us experienced the Great Recession of 2008, the horrific 9/11 terrorist attack on our great country, the H1N1 and SARS. This pandemic overcame our country in a matter of days, literally overnight, and we are at ground zero. I am all for safety and protection of our city and our people. We understand the great concern importance of taking action and making swift changes that you and the City Manager have the authority to make. Although since your swift ruling of shelter in place limiting activity defined by non-essential businesses versus essential business, Palm Springs has become a ghost town, this is really scary and has affected all businesses in our city, there is no business. We have sent over 25 of our restaurant employees home, and they will eventually be forced to go unemployment or leave us and find other jobs in other cities. We will do our best to compensate them, but these are workers that work from paycheck to paycheck. But literally shutting down the city is something that requires calculated risk and not just exercise of power. You must weigh the pros and cons and forward think the impacts of your decisions and actions. So far, you are the only city in the valley that has taken such drastic measures, which to me makes no real sense if the other cities in the valley have not yet followed suit, and other large cities in Southern California as well. In the same breath, I must applaud you, your commitment of time and your community, our police and fire, the folks on the front line who risk their lives and well-being for others. I only ask that you please measure your actions and calculate your risks to avoid the meltdown of this causing and its long-term impacts it will have on Palm Springs. I only ask that you please have a plan in place, make sure that you have measures and drastic, to make the drastic decisions that you're making, a plan that has proper resources in place, mitigate health and pay for monetary losses before your actions remain in place. Unfortunately, it may be too late.
Your time is up, we're going to need to disconnect now.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, God bless.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Perchak, this is Anthony calling from...
Thank you.
This is Anthony calling from the City of Palm Springs, if you're watching the meeting on TV, if you could please lower the volume so we reduce the echo, and you'll have two minutes to begin your comments, beginning now.
Well, I had a question. Many of the seniors here, including myself, are homebound and cannot get around for food. If there is a shortage, for some reason, in deliveries which we're having trouble getting, is there a food bank that the city is putting together, or some source that seniors will be able to do their shopping, or have friends or family do it for them? Those are my comments, and my questions.
Thank you very much, we can't respond to questions, but this item is on the agenda, and during our talk about the emergency declaration, we will report out on the various food bank and other options during this meeting. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to disconnect now, thank you.
Hello, can't answer the phone at the moment.
Hello?
Hello, Ginny Weisman, this is Anthony calling from the City of Palm Springs, if you're watching the video on TV, if you could please lower the volume, and you'll have two minutes to address your comments to the City Council, beginning now.
Yes, hi, this is Ginny Weisman with the Pet Ministry and New Harmony Habitat Sanctuary for seeing the people in past. First, I want to thank Mayor Coors and Mayor Pro Tem Holstage, and the whole City Council and staff for their strong leadership and hard work, and for making and implementing the difficult decisions to keep us safe. My question is, what have you been able to do with the $10 million allocated for homelessness so far, and are there any plans to be announced about it? As many of you know from our meetings and discussions about my planned affordable housing development, I'm working with a local company in Indio that Mayor Pro Tem Holstage recently toured. We'd like to know, we'd like you to know that we are ready, willing, and able to crank up production and build homeless and affordable housing in less than 90 days at effective and low-cost pricing, and we are also available to serve in any other emergency building needs that you may have immediately to address this crisis. We really appreciate all you're doing, and we want you to know that we are there for you if you need us.
Okay, thank you, and we'll disconnect our call now.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, Mariel Nunez?
This is her.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the City of Palm Springs, if you're watching the video online, if you could please lower the volume, and you'll have two minutes to address your comments to the City Council, beginning now.
Thank you. Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, everyone, my name is Maribel Nunez, I work in, organize in Palm Springs with California Partnership, and also working in collaboration with Bayani Hunk, the desert. And I wanted to thank the council members, Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor and City Manager. I was able to read the agenda and was very happy to see with COVID-19, Item 5C, I support all the different resolutions, the ratification of the local emergency, the economic measures, and the eviction moratorium, so thank you for taking that proactive measure. And one thing I do want to also ask, that I think we need to add in this resolution, I support, you know, the business license fee, I think you get further than what I suggested in waiving that, and then also the moratorium, but I think we also need to take a second look in regards to the parking and street sweeping tickets, if that could be also, if there could be some relief of helping people that are struggling, or suspend a 90-day suspension for those tickets to pay, to be paid, and then also either a 90-day suspension or some kind of economic relief, anything that relates to code-enforced fees as well, would be very helpful. And the other thing too, because I know in Palm Springs, you don't have, the city doesn't own the electricity or water or trash collection, if the city could work with, you know, SoCal Edison, with the Desert Water Agency, and the Palm Springs Disposal Service, to push them to not penalize folks if they can't pay, especially as a result of COVID-19. So anyway, so I really wanted to thank you all for your proactive leadership, and then there's definitely more work to be done, and be a partner to try to help our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
You have reached the voicemail.
Last caller.
Hello?
Hello, sir. If you could please state your name when you begin your comments, and if you're watching the video online, if you could please reduce the volume, and you'll have two minutes to begin your comments now.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Busquet. I'm a small commercial landlord with buildings on Palm Canyon. I rely on income from the rents as my sole, they cover all of my expenses, in particular the mortgages on the buildings and my living expenses. I am not unique in Palm Springs. Many of the smaller buildings are in fact owned by people like me. I collect my rents on the 5th of each month. By the 15th of each month, 93% of the rental money is gone, paid to first banks for mortgages, Palm Springs Disposal, Desert Water, the electric companies, gardeners, property managers, et cetera. Without rents, I and many other small property owners simply do not have the money to pay these people. My situation is not unique. I know it's sometimes easy to think of landlords as nothing other than rich families or anonymous corporations with deep pockets that can backstop the tenants and city by simply deferring rent and somehow paying all their costs out of secret piles of cash for months. It's simply not true. As a small building owner, I cannot survive without rents for months. I'm talking about Item 5C, which is the moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rents. My suggestion would be that you consider land, small landlords as well, and include in there banks deferring mortgage payments so that banks can't charge interest and late fees, or foreclose on the buildings, utility companies, Desert Water, Palm Springs Disposal, et cetera. So you think about the small landlords that somehow we need to be able to defer the stuff the exact same amount of time. So I beg you and urge you to please help us, otherwise we will not survive. Finally, Measure J funds, I would suggest now is the time to look at using Measure J funds for this emergency and to help small businesses in town, rather than the beautification and other projects that is currently designed to be used for. So I beg you to not pass Item 5C until you first consider small landlords and include things in there, and most importantly, banks, so that they can't foreclose on our buildings. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, Dammy Sanchez?
Yes, this is she.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. If you're watching this live, if you could please reduce the volume. Otherwise, you can begin your comments to the city council, and you'll have two minutes.
Okay. Yes, my, no, I'm not watching live. But anyway, my comments for the homeless is I would like to see if anything can be done. I am the voice for the homeless, I could say that. I am looking at that everybody is concerned about getting people inside and lockdowns, and people are running and emptying out the shelves on grocery stores. Oh, what about the homeless? They don't have a place to run and hide, and they don't have a place to go indoors. They don't have a place to go and eat now. There's no places that EBT can be able to take them. There's no, the drive-throughs are the only ones that are available right now. There's no bathrooms. So there's so many motels that are vacant, can't there anybody be able to do a voucher for these homeless people, so that you can be able to get them indoors? This is a concern for people that are running in and out of the stores while there's homeless that don't know where to go. They're all out there, and it's cold, it's raining, and coronavirus is out in the air. So we, as people, need to be able to help these people. They were people at one time. They are people. They're humans. They're not animals, and even animals are being taken care of more than what these poor homeless people are, you know? So we need to think about the homeless. It's something that needs to be taken care of. They are being forgotten. They are forgotten. There's nobody that wants to help them. Everybody wants to get rid of them. They think that's an eyesore for them. Well, I mean, they once had a house, but now they don't have a house. But look at the people that just lost the houses on the burn places and the floods. They don't have houses now, but they're called homeless as well. But why? They had a house. Well, people on the streets had a home too. They were somebody at one time. So we're just asking for--
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Your time is up, and we'll need to disconnect now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Great, thank you, and thank you for everyone who participated in public comment by phone. The next item is city council and city manager comments and reports. I want to start, the governor is in the middle of a press conference where he is announcing a mandatory shelter in place for the entire state of California. We don't have all the details yet, but I know the city manager is going to get them, and once we have them, we will share that with everyone. But this is going to be a statewide stay-in-place order from the state of California. Do you want to share some other information regarding things that have happened since we met two days ago regarding the coronavirus? We don't know if that, what business rules are on that. We don't have the specifics, so I think it's important to report where we are so people know. There was a Coachella Valley Association of Governments special meeting this morning to talk about whether there should be any unique response Coachella Valley-wide, similar to what we've already done in Palm Springs. Congressman Dr. Rol Ruiz spoke and shared a lot of information, and I do want to share it, and it's very relevant in fact to what the governor is doing as well. But the modeling that's been done at Eisenhower says that if we do not take the extraordinary actions of stay in place and closing nonessential businesses, and in the best case, each person who's infected infects two others, we will see 23 more deaths. If we have higher transmission of four per person, in 90 days, we'll have 5,000 deaths in the Coachella Valley. There was a discussion at that point about whether what the county is doing, which is no gatherings of more than 10 people, restaurants could have 10 people in each room with six-foot distancing, all businesses could remain open with no more than 10 people, and social distancing. The county felt that would only give a marginal increase in protecting people from the virus. And Dr. Ruiz shared that a 10% marginal increase for folks staying at home would save 1,000 lives in the Coachella Valley. We then went into a discussion. Supervisor Perez requested the county's legal counsel to give his opinion on whether the County Department of Public Health could make different rules for the Coachella Valley than for the rest of the county, and he said, yes, this is a policy question. Congressman Ruiz explained that 30% of residents in the Coachella Valley are 60 years of age and older. We have higher rates of diabetes, cardiovascular, respiratory, pulmonary issues than the national average, in some cases, much higher, and 6 to 8 times higher HIV infections in the Coachella Valley than national. We then had a discussion, and the chairman, the chair of SEVAC's Executive Committee is the chairman of the Agua Caliente Band of Quee Indians, Jeff Grubie. He supported doing something Valley-wide, following Palm Springs, and I want to really commend the tribe for very quickly joining us in acting. They have closed all of their facilities to the public, and just basic government operations at their government administration building. They're responsible for 4,000 people, between their members and their families, as well as the 2,500 employees, all of whom are getting paid during this. So we really want to thank them for their extraordinary leadership, since their income is pretty much depleted with the closure of the casinos and their other restaurants and businesses. The supervisor, Manuel Perez, said he would also like to see something different for the Coachella Valley. It was pointed out that we are, were at the time, more cases per capita than almost anywhere in the country. Maybe New Rochelle, New York is the only exception. The Coachella Valley was described by Dr. Cameron Kaiser from the County Department of Public Health as a hotspot, and as ground zero in Riverside County. And Coachella Mayor Stephen Hernandez said that he plans to bring, within 48 hours, a measure similar, if not identical, to Palm Springs that he supports. That ended the support from everyone else, and it ranged from we should just wait for the county to tell us what to do, to those who felt this was not as bad as the flu, and a whole range of different reasons. There was discussion about doing a statement about people being safe in the Coachella Valley, and just asking that the Director of Public Health for the county keep an eye on the Coachella Valley and report back to us. That was not supported by the overwhelming majority, which ended the meeting. It seems that what the governor did may supersede that, but I did want to report what had happened. Some cities were encouraging people to come visit still, and, you know, we all appreciate, everyone wants to do its best for residents, and, you know, it's taken us a whole different amount of times to get to where we are, but the evidence is clear. The White House last week recommended that with states with community spread, there should be no public gatherings, and I'm really proud of this council and this city for the actions we took early to help lead this. I think with, Los Angeles County did it earlier today, and the Bay Area counties did it earlier, and Sacramento, and I think that all helped get the governor to his decision. The governor earlier announced that the modeling showed that without actions like what the San Francisco Bay Area and Palm Springs have done, he expects over 56% of all Californians to be infected with the virus, and that's over 25 million people. The rate has been doubling every four days in California, so I'm pleased to see that. I know we're all pleased to see that. So, you know, we will come back to this as we learn more and share more, but I did wonder to sort of share where we're at. We do have an item on the agenda to talk about our emergency declaration. We'll see what's needed in it as well by the time we get to that. That may change or be superseded, so, you know, I'll reserve the rest of my comments on that issue till then. Nothing else of high priority has happened since we last met, other than this, and I do want to say, one, how much I appreciate our staff, who are still working to provide service to the public during this time, our public safety officials, who are constantly putting themselves in harm's way every single day they work, and especially now, and all of the people in the healthcare industry who are working day and night to help people at risk to themselves. It is truly inspiring to see their behavior. I also want to thank our residents. Our residents and businesses overwhelmingly have been very compliant with the orders and the rules that we set in place. The police have found people to be really positive about it. On social media, people are not always the most positive. People have been very positive about our actions, understand it, appreciate we're leading, appreciate we want to keep everyone safe. We understand this is going to hurt everyone. It's going to hurt everyone financially, people who know people who are going to have the virus, and it's our community that keeps us strong and that will keep us moving through this. So with that, any other public comments?
I have comments.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Garner.
So I do want to echo what Mayor Kors said, with thank you to everyone--
Whoops. Anthony?
Please wait during technical difficulties.
Looks like it went away better. Okay, I'll go on.
You go and give it to the rest of the council.
I wanted to just give a thank you to all of our public safety workers as well, and our city staff, and our city, state, county, and federal governments across the country that's involved, what's going on right now. And I also want to give a very special thank you to the grocery workers, and healthcare workers, social workers, farm workers, our cleaning staff. There are so many people that are doing this work every day to make sure that our grocery stores are stocked, to make sure that the people are getting what they need, and that our payers are being taken care of. And to just want to make sure everyone has to keep all of those people in mind, and that's more than I can. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that we, we need to make sure that we're supporting Asian-American communities in Palm Springs and just across the United States and the world right now. There have been reports of hate crimes or insensitive comments and things from the Asian-American community, largely spurred by our president and other members of the government using the Chinese virus, which is not at all accurate or appropriate. And it's important that if you do hear their kind of comments, that you make sure to tell people that isn't okay, and that if you do, if you are hearing about any reports of new crimes, that you are reporting them. On our website for the Human Rights Commission, there is information there on hate crimes, and you can also make a complaint of discrimination through the Human Rights Commission, and of course, you should also make those complaints to the police department. I do want to just state that, that we are in solidarity with our Asian-American residents and the community, and I want to make sure that that's highlighted as something that we don't stand for in Palm Springs, and to please let us know if you need support of your experience, any things that we should know about. The other thing I wanted to point out is the animal shelter is still allowing for adoption and fostering of pets. So while we're in this situation, I'm sure some people are feeling a little bit lonely, and if you want to foster or adopt a pet, you can call the animal shelter and make an appointment to pick up a pet, and they'll go walking through that process over the phone, send pictures on Facebook, on Instagram of the pet, and you can talk to staff on the phone about what pet would be best for you before you arrive to pick them up. So that's it for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Councilmember Woods?
I just want to take a moment to reiterate what the mayor had said and what Councilmember Gardner had said as well, but I wanted to add one additional thing, is that there's a lot of misinformation out there, particularly on platforms like YouTube and whatnot, and I know that, that both Google and Facebook are working very hard to remove some of that false information that's out there, and I just want people to be aware, when they read something, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's true, and to actually go to some of the credible sources, particularly coming out of the government right now, on what actually is happening and why we're taking action that we're taking. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the representative for Palm Springs to the Sunline Board of Directors, I'd like to alert you to a couple of things that Sunline is doing in response to the emergency. One is, earlier this week, they moved to make all buses free during the course of this emergency, so there are no fares for riding any buses. Sunline is in the process now of moving schedules to respond to the emergency to ensure that we have the greatest amount of resources and the lowest, the quickest routes on the most heavily-traveled routes, and therefore, within the next-- And therefore, within the next couple of days, Sunline is going to be moving to what is essentially their Sunday services and their Sunday service schedule. That, those schedules will take a few of the least traveled routes off of the schedule during the course of this emergency, so that personnel can be working on those most heavily traveled routes. For those of us in Palm Springs, one impact of moving to the Sunday schedules is the bus will no longer be running during the course of this emergency. To the fullest extent possible, and is not always possible on a bus, they are working to ensure that there is social distancing among the passengers and among the operators of the bus. And I would like to applaud Sunline's leadership for the actions that they're taking. There will be a conference call, board meeting this upcoming Wednesday. If there are any questions or anything from my colleagues that you would like me to take back to that meeting, please do get those to me. And lastly, with regard to this emergency and the actions that we've taken in our city, I believe the actions in Los Angeles, what we are seeing now, the leadership from our governor, who's been quite the leader throughout this process. This is an incredibly complex healthcare emergency. There are going to be enormous economic consequences. Everyone understands that. But the first actions that we have to take are ones to protect the public safety. Every one of us has, over and over again, said the first responsibility of an elected official is public safety. Well, ensuring that we respond to this healthcare crisis is meeting and carrying out our obligations to protect the public safety. We will, in time, deal also with the economic consequences that this catastrophe has placed before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to add one more thing to this. The city has been funding a overnight emergency shelter for homeless individuals at the boxing club on El Cielo. That is currently still open, but greater social distancing is needed under other laws, and we will find out what the governor says shortly. The county, through Greg Rodriguez, who works for Supervisor Perez, has been working to obtain more hotel, motel vouchers, as well as other things. I just want to sort of report the most recent update on that, which I just received. They have been able to obtain a larger facility at the Palm Springs High School, which is now closed through April 30th. And they're working on logistics to get that set up, as well as working on funding to do that. They've identified a large number of hotel and motel vouchers that they were able to get, to help get people into inside places. Obviously motel and, hotel and motels give people their own space, their own bathrooms, and given a virus is the best option for folks. And that's all moving. And they're also looking through announcement the governor made, of being able to actually take an entire, long-term, an entire motel, that could be used for transitional housing for people who are currently homeless. So we're continuing regular communication. Mayor Pro Tim Holstich and I, along with the city manager, have been meeting every day with Greg Rodriguez and folks at the county on this. Our supervisor is on the governor's homelessness task force. And so this is continuing to be a priority, and we are working very hard with them to get the funding and help the county get the funding to move forward on this. And anyone else have anything else? Okay, perfect. Thank you. The next item is the consent calendar.
Mayor, before, before that.
Yes, oh, city manager.
Just, one, one thing that we did want to just do, just very briefly update you on, is obviously we're doing everything we can to reach out to the community with, 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 from, through the library. And what the service is, the library providing, particularly now, is people are being asked to stay home. And I've asked librarian Ms. Kays to join us, and we have one slide. She can just briefly go through what we're doing, not the least of which is, we're offering everyone basically a free digital library card. And that's actually an interesting program, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I just wanted to report to you that even though the library is closed, we're still here for you in our community. And we are, we've taken steps to institute free temporary library cards for residents of Palm Springs and the Coachella Valley. So we have the ability to activate a card for you. Normally, we require people to come in and show their ID, but in this emergency, we are, we want to make sure that people have access. And I'm sorry for the slide having so many, so much content, but hopefully we could maybe put it on Channel 17, or check out our website, which is palm springs library dot org slash my account. And go there to apply for a free library card. It's a 90-day temporary card, and it will give you access to all of our online resources, which already exist and are wonderful for people who are stuck at home or just educational opportunities. So Brain Pop and Brain Pop Junior are children's programming. It's educational. Brain Fuse is online tutoring. It's even in Spanish. And we've got eBooks, audiobooks, our Canopy streaming service. And Canopy has taken the steps temporarily to open up Canopy for Kids with unlimited access. And so, right now, we're currently limited, the number of streams, because we have to pay for this. And, but they've said Canopy for Kids is free. Acorn TV, we've got great courses, test prep, magazines. We have over 100 digital magazines that you could download and keep. Freegal Music, we have a subscription to the New York Times Online, which is completely the online edition. You just come onto our website, get the pass every day, and you have full access to the New York Times. And then you can learn 70 languages. And we want to invite people to let, you know, to come to the library virtually, palm springs library dot org, and get your card. And I just want to report, we, we announced this yesterday at 3:00 PM, and in 24 hours, we have issued 165 new library cards. And our average monthly library card addition is 325. So we've done half a month's worth of work in 24 hours. So we're still there working for you, and we want to make sure that our customers have access to their resources. So thank you.
Really terrific. Thank you so much. Really important.
And then also, Mayor, one more. Marcus has an announcement from Palm Springs Disposal, which will be a welcome announcement, I believe. Marcus?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council, and the public watching and listening at home. Our good stakeholders, Palm Springs Disposal Services, issued a letter to us today. I'm going to briefly read it. Today, they're offering and announcing a customer relief package designed to offer some relief to businesses and residents impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Specifically for businesses, eligible businesses are hospitality, including restaurants, bars, and hotels, cannabis lounges, and gyms. They're offering a 20% discount applied to their March billing, and those customers should contact Palm Springs Disposal directly. Also, all businesses in Palm Springs should contact Palm Springs Disposal to learn how to optimize their service, which would include reducing the number of weekly collections or downsizing their bin, all in an effort to minimize their costs during this downturn. For residents, they're going to be issuing their quarterly billing statement by the end of the month. That's for April through June. They are offering to waive that cost to any residents that are rendered unemployed. And so further information will be provided to the public. We'll post these online. But I do recommend that you refer to Palm Springs Disposal Services to their website and to give them a call. Again, we'll put all this information available electronically through Nextdoor and through all of our other outreach methods. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other presentations? No? The next item is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without the, oh, Councilmember Garner, go ahead.
No, sorry. These on this one makes it hard. Keep going.
Okay. With the following item removed for separate discussion, which is item 1 CC. So is there a motion? Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Corshin?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great, okay. Can we get a staff report on item 1 CC, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item is recommending that you consider and authorize staff to proceed with design and installation of two new traffic signals. As noted in the staff report, the city did perform formal engineering analysis in accordance with the state's traffic signal warrant guidelines. And based on that analysis, new traffic signals are recommended at the intersection of Indian Canyon Drive and Rosa Parks, and also on San Rafael Drive and Avenida Caballeros. Those two intersections have been observed as needing some analysis, and we're recommending that the council authorize us to proceed with those projects. As noted in the staff report, a separate item that you just approved has identified these two signals for funding through SB 1, which is the new gas tax funding. And that would be funds that we, we would receive in the next fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Garner, I think you asked for this to be pulled, so we'll start with you.
Thank you. I wanted to pull this because the desert Highlands Gateway State community has been asking for a right at Indian Canyon and Rosa Parks for a very long time. There have been several accidents there, including a friend of mine last year, and it's, it's just been a very problem area for a long time. I'm very happy to see this move forward. I know that the residents are very happy. And then the same with San Rafael and the Avenida Caballeros. That has also been a difficult intersection that I get comments on all the time. I drive down there every day as well to get the work, and it is a problem. But I'm really happy to see this move forward. And I want us to thank our residents for bringing these issues to our attention, for not giving us on it, and making sure that we do what we need to do to keep our residents safe.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Woods?
I would echo everything that Commissioner, excuse me, not Commissioner, Councilmember Garner stated. I also want to state, I want to thank staff. In my three and a half months of being a council member, the intersection of Santa, San Rafael and Avenida Caballeros has been a constant stream of emails. And I'd like to staff, in that short three and a half months, they have brought it forward and done all the research to get it to the point that it is today. Thank you very much.
Great, okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Corshin?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great, thank you. The next item is item 2A. A consideration or request by Parker Palm Springs for a planned development district to include 32 hotel units and accessory uses, associated parking lots, and landscaping on the undeveloped 3.53 acre parcel, currently zoned R3 into Plan Development District 58 in lieu of a change of zone at 4200 East Palm Canyon Drive. This will be a public hearing item. Staff report, please.
I have to recue myself.
Okay.
For business reasons.
Okay, so we'll call.
And just for the record, Councilmember Garner will be muting the audio and any video on her end in order to comply with recently advised, recently provided advice by the FPPC.
With that, I'll go ahead with my presentation on the project. This is a request for approval of a major architectural application and an amendment to a planned development district for an expansion of the Parker Hotel, which will result in an addition of 32 hotel rooms to the property. In terms of the site, the entire Parker Palm Springs property is about 13 and a half acres. However, the portion where the new expansion of the hotel will be is only about 3.7 acres in size, and it's located on the northern end of the site. In terms of the proposed expansion, as I had mentioned, it includes 32 new hotel units plus accessory uses. There is a separate dining room, kitchen facilities for guests of this portion of the property. It's intended to be operated separately from the Parker, so that the guests from the two facilities generally won't mix in terms of the facilities that they have there. In addition, the expansion is not intended to be open to the public. It's solely for guests. So on the regular property, where they have the restaurants and the bar that is open to the public, the expansion will not have those facilities that are open to the public. In addition, it's not intended to have any outdoor pool parties. Special events will be limited, and there will be no outside sound amplification there at the property. This is the site plan for the expansion. Again, the entire area for the expansion is 3.7 acres in size. It will include a number of separate buildings for the 32 guest units. Two of the buildings will be two stories in height. The remaining buildings will be one story in height. And it does include two new parking areas on the property. One of the actions that we're also taking with this application is to correct the existing zoning on the site. As you can see on the map, on the left, the property is split zoned. Part of the property is zoned R3, which is a multifamily and hotel district. The remaining portion of the property is zoned Plan Development District 58. The intention is that the entire property will become Plan Development District 58, and will adopt the same development standards in terms of height and setbacks as the R3 zone district. In terms of our review of the project relative to development standards, the project complies with all height, setback, lot coverage, and open space requirements. It complies with the density limitation that we have on the site. In fact, the density of the project is significantly less than what would be permitted under the general plan. One of the things that the applicant is requesting is a specific parking plan to address their parking issues on the site. Relative to the existing hotel, as it stands today, it is non-conforming as to parking. They do have a valet-only parking plan, which helps to address that by stacking additional vehicles on the site. In terms of the expansion, it is required to provide 50 spaces. They are providing 51 new spaces on the 3.7 acre site. Looking at the overall project combined, it requires a total of 282 spaces. With the new spaces that are added, they'll have a total of 205 spaces. They have submitted a specific parking plan, which allows them to use a valet-only operation, just as they are doing now. By doing that, they can gain room for 153 additional vehicles by using tandem parking in their parking lots, both existing and proposed. And so with the approval of the specific parking plan, they'll be able to meet their parking needs for the property through the use of tandem parking and stacking vehicles on the site. The Planning Commission first considered the application at their January 8th meeting. Based on the public comment that was received, the Planning Commission requested that the applicant hold a community outreach meeting, which they did on January the 21st. At the public outreach meeting, there were a number of comments that were received by the applicant. Staff was also present to listen to the comments. One of the key issues that was mentioned at the meeting was the desire to move the new valet driveway for Parker Hall from Linden Way to either Cherokee or Seven Lakes. That was one of the major concerns. There were also concerns about the parking plan. There was a concern about the height of the buildings, even though they do conform to our code requirements, and generally the impacts from traffic associated with the project. Based on those comments that the applicant received, they made revisions to their site plan, and I'll show you the revisions here. In the original site plan that they submitted to us, the new valet driveway for the expansion was on Linden Way. You can see there by the red arrows that guest vehicles would be entering off of Linden Way. So again, based on the community input, the applicant revised their site plan and moved that guest entry to Seven Lakes Drive, and so that there will not be any new entries on Linden Way. Associated with that, the applicant has revised their traffic circulation pattern based on community input. Looking on the left, in terms of the guest circulation pattern, guests will enter and exit on Cherokee Way with access to Parker Hall on Seven Lakes Drive and the rest of the property from Cherokee. the property from Cherokee Way. In terms of their valet circulation pattern and also the circulation pattern for service and deliveries, that will happen again off of Cherokee Way and Seven Lakes Drive. So again, responding to the input from the community in removing traffic from Linden Way adjacent to the Canyon Sands community. Responding to the concerns about the height of the two-story buildings, the applicant submitted sections through the site from the Canyon Sands community, looking at a section through Linden Way here. They will continue to have the 20-foot ficus hedge around the property, which will screen most of the two-story buildings from view by adjacent residences. So again, the building height does conform to our code requirements, and the proposed hedge that exists currently will also screen those facilities as well. In terms of the Planning Commission review of the project, at the second meeting held with the Planning Commission, and based on the revisions to the site plan that the applicant made after listening to community input, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project, subject to a number of additional conditions. One was relative to pedestrian gates on Linden Way, that those remained available only by card access only, so again, trying to discourage any type of traffic from Linden Way. That food service at Parker Hall be limited to guests of the property only, that there be no amplified sound outdoors, that all driveways and dimensions of parking lots conform to our code requirements, and then finally, that the landscaping at the perimeter of the property conform to the AAC recommendations and approval. Also, there remain some concerns about traffic in the area that may not be solely associated with the hotel, and based on those community concerns, the Planning Commission amended one of the conditions of approval, engineering condition number 51, relative to traffic calming improvements that the city should investigate and pursue if warranted. That includes investigating the installation of a speed monitoring sign on Seven Lakes, to investigate if warrants for stop signs at the surrounding intersections are met, to study the possibility of angled parking on Cherokee Way, to investigate a preferential on-street parking program for residents, particularly on Linden Way, and then also investigate a left-turn-only exit from the Parker Hall property. So again, these were added conditions of approval by the Planning Commission that are relative to traffic concerns not only associated with the hotel, but also with current traffic conditions there adjacent to the property. The Planning Commission found that the project is consistent with the general plan, it's in conformance with the city's development standards, the specific parking plan will address parking concerns, and the revisions made to the site plan will reduce any impacts to adjacent properties. So based on that, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the project, as does staff. That concludes my presentation to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and as I understand, the applicant is available by phone to do a short presentation to you. In addition, the applicant submitted a PowerPoint presentation. You have copies of that presentation in your yellow folders. I do have some of the slides available if you'd like to go through those after the applicant offers their public comment. With that, I'll conclude. Thank you. Director Fag. Mayor Protim Holstich.
Thank you, and thank you to our planning director and planning staff for excellent work. I know that we received, there are dozens and dozens and dozens of emails and public comment about this issue, and I know it's been a long process that you've been working on this, so I really appreciate your excellent work, a lot of outreach with the neighborhoods, a lot of neighborhood input. I'm wondering about continuing with this meet, with this public hearing when this is closed to the public and people are just participating by phone. That's probably a question to the planning director about delaying this or continuing the public hearing until the public's properly notified that we're moving forward with this hearing. To be honest, I wasn't sure earlier this week when I was preparing for this meeting if this meeting, if the public hearing item would go forward after this, you know, emergency and all the different changes and the different issues that we've been working on. So I'm wondering the, your opinion and staff recommendation about the ability to continue this hearing into two weeks or whatever you advise versus moving forward tonight when we don't have people here present and we don't have very many comments from the public on the phone.
What I would recommend that you do is take any testimony that is being offered this evening, both from the applicant and members of the public. Based on the testimony you receive, you may wish to continue the hearing for two weeks to see if there's any additional testimony, but I would wait until after you've heard from the callers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, so at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to present their case. If requested, the applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal. The public is invited to speak on this item for two minutes each, and I believe we have one speaker. Hello, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, this is Anthony calling from the City of Palm Springs City Council Meeting. If you're watching this meeting live, if you could please reduce the volume, and you'll have up to five minutes to make your comments to the city council.
Thank you. Honorable council members, my name is Michael McDonald. I'm one of the architects for Parker Hall, the project before you. Thank you for accommodating us to speak on this project. We are keenly aware of how much this process has impacted our daily lives, so it's inspiring to see the council continuing to work to build a better and healthier community despite these challenges we face. I've been watching remotely, so thank you, Flynn, for the project summary. As Flynn noted, Parker Hall is designed as a high-end luxury resort whose design draws from Palm Springs history and seeks to provide a unique and memorable destination. Unlike Parker Palm Springs, Parker Hall will not be open to the public and is oriented as an intimate setting for book guests and their visitors. While community development standards would support 157 rooms for the site area, the design is set in a state-like residential scale consisting of only 32 rooms. Essentially, our project seeks to minimize development impact while providing a high-grossing hotel for the Palm Springs community that will contribute jobs and additional economic activity to the city at large. I want to take a moment to talk about the process for community outreach, which has resulted in a stronger project that will ensure the best benefit for the Palm Springs community and address the concerns of neighbors. The Parker, led by General Manager Brandon McCurley, reached out to and met with the various neighboring communities to the Parker Hotel, including Canyon Sands, Seven Lakes Country Club, the Oasis Resort, and the larger Melody Ranch Association. Based on the valuable feedback we received, the design team worked with Parker management and city staff to adjust the project design and site layout to address the concerns that were communicated. The resulting updated design that you see today was presented to the neighboring communities and the Planning Commission, where it received unanimous approval. Through the process, we brought in professional engineers and consultants to look at the parking, traffic, and noise issues to ensure we did everything we could to mitigate potential concerns. Our consultants prepared a specific parking plan as part of the project that will help to resolve current issues related to street parking near the hotel. This plan will enable hotel operations to park all vehicles onsite during events or surges in parking demand. The Parker has an all-valet parking model where guests and visitors are not allowed to self-park. This enables hotel staff to use the onsite area devoted to parking more efficiently. Parker Hall is an exciting opportunity to create a special destination, which builds on the success that Parker Palm Springs has had over the last 15 years. We welcome any questions that you may have about the project, and we do ask for your support tonight so we can keep this expeditiously moving forward and make this amazing project a reality for the Palm Springs community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now so that I can get the next caller, and then we'll return to you for any rebuttal.
Thanks.
Hi, Off Top, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting. If you're watching it live, if you could please reduce the volume, and you'll have two minutes to speak, and you can begin your.
After you reduce the volume. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Off Top Dara, and I manage the Hilton. And I'm here in support 100% of the Parker Hall project. As you all know, Parker is a very, very unique resort in our community, and we are blessed to have the Parker family embarking on expanding this project to a totally different level. I can share with you that this property is the highest grossing TOT revenue not only for the City of Palm Springs, but for the entire Coachella Valley. And, and this evening, I would love to see it that the council tonight unanimously approve this project without delaying it, knowing that under these difficult times, this project is being self-funded by the Parker family, which is very, very unique. So again, on behalf of the entire tourism community, please approve this project tonight, with any delays, because I can share with you that I'm a hotelier. This is not a competition, neither to the Hilton, neither to any other properties in the valley. So please, let's move forward tonight, let's not delay it, and get this project approved so the Parker family can embark on creating a project that is second to none, not only in the Coachella Valley, but the entire Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you, Off Top, and we'll disconnect now. Hi, we have returned, and if you heard the comment from the public comment, you would now have two minutes to provide a rebuttal if you desire.
I mean, obviously, I have no rebuttal. We appreciate the caller's comments in support of the project. I just, again, would open myself to any questions, if there are any questions from the council, and then again, reiterate that we would greatly appreciate moving forward the project tonight. We do understand that the meeting has been fully noticed. At the last round of meeting, there've been a number of rounds of community input, and at the last meeting, we saw that the project had widespread support. I think that's probably the predominant reason that there are not a number of callers in, because we have modified the project to address concerns that were communicated. And I just would, again, reiterate that we would appreciate moving the project forward, especially in the light of the current economic climate that we find ourselves in.
Okay.
Please let me know if there are any questions. I can remain on mute, or neither, you can call me back if that's appropriate.
Please stay on the line. The council members will ask any questions they may have, and if you could also stay on the line until this item concludes, but please don't interrupt the council unless a question is being asked.
Understood, will do.
Close the public hearing first and then questions? Yeah, okay, so we'll close the public hearing, and Mayor Protim Holstich.
Thank you. I just have a question about the timing and continuance of this decision, so could you say more about why it would be a financial or other burden for you to move this to two weeks? I know that, thank you for working with the community and everything that you've done. I know you've gotten to Planning Commission a number of times, so appreciate that, but wondering if you could speak more to the burden for any amount of delay and the importance of doing anything tonight.
Right, so I'm just the architect, so I can't speak to the owner's financial position or anything to that effect. I am just requesting, based on the reality that the project has been delayed a great deal already, we've gone through a number of revisions to the project, and the owner is well behind their current schedule. And while I am not a decision maker, so I can't say whether or not, you know, further delay would jeopardize the project or not, I just, from being someone who's working on the project, I'm requesting that we, we move the project forward now.
Thank you.
And, and I would also remind the council, which I'm sure, of course, you know, there is a second reading that is required under this project in two weeks, where the project can again be heard by members of the public, and there could be an opportunity then for further, further discussion.
Councilmember Middleton.
There we go. Councilman, our Mayor Protim Holstich asked the question that I was planning to ask, so I'll have some comments when we get to that.
We're in comment and questions now, so.
Right. I was present for very definitely the first discussion of this at the Planning Commission, and then the subsequent discussion at the Planning Commission, and what I saw was grave and serious concern on the part of the homeowners at the Canyon Sands neighborhood. That was fairly universal at this, and the developer sat down and met with them. This neighborhood is a unique neighborhood that includes both the Seven Lakes and the Oasis developments, and it, they came to a very equitable solution that had extremely broad support through the community. I don't believe it was 100% support, but very broad support. The architecture on this project is absolutely stunning, and I think it is going to be an incredible addition to our community.
I think this is a prime example of how our planning process is working, and I'm sorry for the delay on your part, but it's part of the planning process that got us to this point today of hopefully having a better project for both the developer as well as the applicant, as well as the neighbors. If we could pull up the slide, if it's possible to pull up the slide on the recommendations that were being asked of the city council, I would appreciate that. And we're just waiting a minute while that's being pulled up. No, the next, there we go. The third went down, the city shall study angled parking on Cherokee. I think as part of this project, I would actually like to see that be done. I say that because currently, the Parker Hotel, at least in my observation, and it didn't come out in the shared report, there is a lot of people parking on Cherokee anyway that are entering the Parker Hotel, and there's a lot of cars backed up, and why not better use that wide boulevard and discuss and do it right now as we're moving forward with this project? That's my only comments. Thank you.
Do you have any response on that? Director Fag? That is included as one of the conditions of approval, and so at the direction of the city council, staff could move forward with looking at the feasibility of adding the angled parking.
And that's at their expense, correct?
Per the city council, if you would like to make that part of the requirement for the applicant to cover those expenses, we could do that with your action.
Well, is that the Planning Commission? That was their recommendation?
It was that the city shall investigate. It did not put the onus on the applicant to do the on-street spaces. But certainly, that's something that the city council could require.
But certainly that's something that the city council could require the applicant.
So Marcus, you have a, just a order of magnitude estimate of that cost?
It would be nominal if it was just striping, so it's certainly appropriate to require that as a condition of approval on the applicant. It's a wide street that can accommodate the angled parking.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor Protim Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Fag, could you please tell us for the second reading? So I think I'm just responding to, this is our first public hearing in a crisis in an empty room and I am looking at this stack of public comments. And so could you maybe help me out? I've read all of the public comments. I've followed this closely. This is in my district and particularly concerned about making sure we just have responded to everyone's concerns here. So could you talk a little bit about maybe the public process for the second reading and how we've notified neighbors and maybe a summary of the issues that people have raised with you if your recommendation is that you think most of the issues have been resolved with public comment and with the neighborhoods?
Yes, absolutely. I'll go ahead and speak to those items. I think as Councilmember Middleton stated at the second meeting of the Planning Commission, looking at the revised plan, we had a lot more support for the project than we did at the first meeting, but it was not 100% and I don't think that we would get that on hardly any project. But they did resolve the major concerns of most of the residents. In terms of our notification for this meeting, we did notify residents within 500 feet of the property of our meeting this evening, so they were provided notice. However, we do find ourselves in an unusual circumstance where it's not as easy for members of the public to participate and so that does give us pause as we look at what is a major project and whether or not we should move forward with it. One of the things that you might consider is, as has been pointed out, because the amendment to the planned development district is in lieu of zone change, it does require that we do that by ordinance, which requires two readings. You could take the action to approve the project tonight. You could also do a public hearing notice again for second reading of the ordinance because the project ultimately cannot be approved without the amendment to the planned development district. And so we could re-notice this item for the April 2nd meeting and then have second reading of the ordinance at that time. That way, we've done additional outreach to members of the public and given them an opportunity to comment if they still have concerns even with the revised project.
Thank you, that's a great suggestion. I think that would alleviate a lot of the concerns here.
I would just suggest if we're doing that, which I also agree addresses the concerns, I think that you wisely raised, to note for folks how to do a phone public comment in the notice and also they can email public comment. We did get a good number by email and we are asking people to do that, but not everyone knows that yet. And so if that's included in the notice, I think that would make me feel a lot more comfortable that people are aware. And if One PS could also do the outreach to the surrounding neighborhoods that they always do, that would be really helpful. Or we can reach out to neighborhood groups and ask them to send it out to their neighborhoods just so we make sure that everyone knows about it. Yes. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Councilmember Woods, seconded by Mayor Protim Holstich.
And Mr. Mayor, does that motion include an amendment to engineering condition number 51 relative to the applicant bearing the cost of the striping on Cherokee Way?
Yes, that and the notice that we discussed.
Okay.
We're good with that? Okay.
If I could just clarify, so the next meeting, you're going to have another public hearing on this item, so is this an introduction, the ordinance and not adoption of the resolution just yet?
It would be adoption of the resolution, introduction of the ordinance, second reading of the ordinance will be on April 2nd. We will send out public notices for second reading.
Not a second public hearing, it's just a second reading.
But if they adopt the resolution tonight and decide not to approve the ordinance next time, would that be a problem?
No, the adoption of the resolution is contingent upon the amendment of the planned development district.
Great, perfect. Yes.
Councilmember Garner? Oh, is recused. Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Kors?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, and if we can get Councilmember Garner back, please.
And I will read the ordinance title. An ordinance of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending planned development district 58, P O D 58, to include a 3.53 acre portion of the Parker Palm Springs property currently zoned R3 into the planned development district 58 in lieu of a change of zone, case 5.927, P O D 58 amendment. And Mr. McDonald, I'm going to disconnect the call now. Councilmember Garner, are you with us again?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Great, thank you. The next item is item 2B, consideration of approving the annual update of the Palm Springs zoning code. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the planning staff has started an annual process to make minor updates to our zoning code as a way to keep our code up to date. The corrections that you have before you this evening are corrections that have been identified by my staff in working with the zoning code or in trying to address questions and concerns from members of the public and also includes minor corrections and changes that the city attorney has recommended to us by changes in state or federal law. There are no major policy changes proposed as part of this update. Just to give you a brief list of some of the things that we are doing as part of this, we're cleaning up several of our use categories, including categories such as video parlors and wedding chapels. We're correcting the limits on the number of children allowed in daycare in residential districts in accordance with changes in state law. We're making changes to the standards in residential districts to encourage the development of accessory dwelling units and we'll actually have a separate ordinance on accessory dwelling units coming forward to you here shortly. We're also proposing changes to clarifying the regulations for our open space zone to make sure that it's consistent with the general plan. We're adjusting the requirements for our temporary signs as has been recommended by the city attorney relative to recent changes in interpretations in federal law. And then we're also proposing to modify the criteria for approval of cannabis waivers so that city council can adopt waivers via resolution after you go through the discussion of how you'd like to formulate those criteria. So that's basically a summary of some of the proposed changes. Again, there are no major policy changes and staff would request your support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for staff? Mayor Protim Holstich.
I have a quick question. I think you might have just answered it, but maybe you could elaborate. So that was my question about the cannabis separation waivers. It just says, as may be determined from time to time via resolution. So that would be up to further decision by the city council and policy direction and then we would set those guidelines.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Any other questions for staff, not comments this time? So we'll open up the public hearing where the...
Mr. Mayor, no public comment?
No public comments. We'll close the public hearing. Okay, now are there any comments? Councilmember Woods? You're on.
Sorry. I actually think this is great. I think we have inconsistencies with our plans sometimes and inconsistency with state law and I think it's very important to keep our plans and our zoning code up to date. So I would make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation.
Okay, do we have a second? Say, motion by Councilmember Woods, seconded by Councilmember Middleton.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Holstich?
Yes.
And Mayor Kors?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, item 3A has been removed from the agenda and will be scheduled for a future city council meeting. Item 4A has also been removed and will be scheduled for a future meeting and item 5A has been removed and will be scheduled for a future council meeting.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could read the ordinance title for 5B, or I'm sorry, 2B. It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, adopting an annual update to the Palm Springs zoning code, case 5.1466 ZTA. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is item 5B, consideration of authorizing the purchase of a cloud-based enterprise resource planner from Tyler Technologies. Staff report, please.
Thank you, members of council. I wanted to highlight this. Normally this would have been on the consent calendar, but I did want to highlight this action only because this is the purchase of what's called the enterprise resource planner, also known as the ERP. And I think it's important to note that what this is going to do in terms of the technology we're able to use at city hall, it's going to certainly assist us with how we interact with the community, particularly where we are today, our ability dealing with finance, procurement, planning, the clerk, city attorney, building and safety, code, fleet, code enforcement, fire department, all those will benefit from this new platform. So I wanted to highlight this. We strongly recommend that we go forward. I'd like to thank our whole IT staff and Aaron Brown, our deputy city manager for technology operations for moving this forward. And I would just note, is a final piece here, that it's a funded project. You provided the dollars to do that and we're ready to move forward. And as a final piece of encouragement, I will have you know that all the masters of public administration students at Cal State San Bernardino have gone through this staff report with a very fine-tooth comb and they have also recommended approval for the city council. Thank you, Mayor.
So one question based on our prior discussion and obviously having this in place now would be really helpful. This is one extreme example of why this is so important. Given the cost of this and the other items, is there any reason we can't wait two weeks until we have a better sense of where we are, hopefully?
Well, Mayor, on this one, I would recommend we move forward because regardless of any ultimate circumstance, this is needed and the sooner we can get started, the better. Now that being said, Aaron, if we did wait two weeks, what is the actual result? I mean, given that it's going to take us months to get it going, two weeks may not matter.
My single biggest worry with that is we're fighting to get into the queue. The circumstances that are going on right now are pushing other cities that we're teetering to the same thing. My plan was to kind of get everything engaged, if you voted yes on this, to try to get us in the queue as quick as possible.
Councilmember Woods?
If I understand correctly, this is, this will actually help our constituents and our residents and those doing business with us to actually interface with us on a more streamlined basis and electronically, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, and so I believe the business retention, this was one of the things they were looking for, was something of this type of a platform?
This is exactly what they were asking for.
And this means like if you go through planning or building and safety, you'll be able to submit plans and whatnot online and...
There would be absolutely no need for you to interact in person unless that was your desire.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Middleton?
I am very supportive of moving forward. I think there are some discretionary issues that we may want to defer, but moving forward with this technology is not discretionary. It is something that we have to do and let's move forward with it. So I have a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Mayor Protim Holstich.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Kors?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Item 5C is related to the emergency declaration and the other items, pieces of it are related to that. I'd like to suggest we take a 10-minute break. I know that staff has been reviewing the governor's order to see how that impacts what we're going to do and if we need to do things and how that might change. So if that's good with everyone, why don't we take a 10-minute break for staff to finish that so they can come back and present that before we move on to those items or as we move on to those items? Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is item 5C, consideration of ratifying the city manager's declaration of the existence of a local emergency related to the coronavirus, discussion of economic measures to implement to support local businesses during the local emergency, and a temporary moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent during the coronavirus pandemic, and other related actions. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, myself, Assistant City Manager Marcus Fuller, and City Attorney Jeff Ballinger, we'll all have a few things to say on all these items. But first, I just want to lead off with this first item. Today, you were formally ratifying the emergency declaration that you had authorized, that I had authorized earlier in the week, and then we also had a city council meeting, and you added to that declaration. So this is the formal ratification. But what I would like to show, a couple items in a brief presentation. You saw this presentation at the previous meeting a few days ago. But just by comparison, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but I want to show you a couple items. So if you recall, a couple days ago, this was the current global cases of COVID, 187,000, that number up at the top that you see. So a couple of days later, now that has gone to 240,119 confirmed cases. So that's the global.
So that's in 48 hours, presumably?
That's basically in two days. So then, with regard to the U.S., what we showed you a couple of days ago, there was 3,400, basically, cases confirmed, 15 in Riverside County. Now, that number has jumped to 10,400 confirmed cases in the United States. So you can see how this is...
And there are six new ones in Riverside County late today.
It's changed, and this is even outdated.
Yes, so that's now 23 or 24, I believe.
And then finally, in the state, 335 on the 15th. And again, California is lagging a couple of days behind the CDC, 15 of which were in Riverside. Now, again, that's now old, as we know. So now that has gone to 675 in the state. And I would note, the Los Angeles Times, they even actually have a higher number, but again, it seems to be fluid, but the number on the left is from the CDC. This is a very sobering piece of information. I think if you just look at it, and it sinks in that in two days, the additional number of cases, the additional confirmed in the U.S., the deaths, and in three days, basically, 340 cases confirmed in California, an increase of 200%. Now, obviously, we likely will see more of those since there's going to be more people tested. And then finally, this is just a graph that just shows you the state of California increase in that virus. So that being said, Mayor, members of council, we are asking you this evening to ratify the declaration. But that being said, apparently, just within the hour, the governor has ordered a new declaration. So we don't have all the information on that. That order that he is doing, a shelter-in-place order, which is similar to what you are approving this evening, it has exceptions. The exceptions are important for people to understand. And what we'd like to show you now is we have some general information, the 16 categories of essential infrastructure, if we could have that. So again, this is not real easy to see, but this is taken from the website. So the critical infrastructure sectors, which are going to have exceptions to the governor's stay-in-place rule, obviously, you can see chemical, commercial, communications. So this is sort of the general sectors, the critical infrastructure, that will have exceptions to that order in place. And people can find this on the governor's website. And then, Erin, if you could show, can you show then a more simplified version? This is also on the website. This is basically a more simplified version of the governor's order of what I can do, what's open. As you can see, it lists gas stations, pharmacies, groceries, banks, laundromats. Now, of course, essential state and local government functions will remain open, including law enforcement. And then, the next one, Erin, of the things of what's closed, and you can see dining in restaurants, bars, entertainment gyms, convention centers, things basically that are in the order that you are ratifying today. So the long and short of it is, we're recommending that you ratify your, the city manager's
Prelimarily, it doesn't. I will tell the council, I suspect that the city will most likely be enforcing the stricter of the two. So if there's a category that maybe the state allows that we don't, we're legally authorized to continue enforcing our order. But preliminarily, I don't see anything that is inconsistent.
So have we resolved a lot of the questions from people in the city about which businesses apply in our order? Do we need to modify any of that to clarify?
I don't think so. I think if there are still questions, and certainly council members, as you hear those questions from the public and different businesses and residents, please feel free to forward those to the city manager and the city attorney, and we will review those and get answers back as quickly as possible. But I think most of those questions have been answered at this point.
Thank you. I just had one more. I know we had given direction that cannabis facilities, just dispensaries for medical purposes, would be allowed. I didn't see it included in this order. Am I missing an exception?
It's not. But then again, the governor's order does not go into a whole lot of details, and so I suspect that's probably why, as well as the fact that even within California, there are many jurisdictions that simply don't deal with cannabis. They prohibit it, and so that's likely why the governor's shied away from it.
So it sounds like we'll just have to wait and really review it in depth, and then give the public more advice and get more advice from the state?
Yep.
Okay.
So unless, and I would mention, unless we hear differently, cannabis distribution is still allowed under our declaration, and we'll believe it is so under the state unless so we find specifically otherwise.
And if we do, if the state doesn't allow it, then we can't allow it.
Correct.
So, okay.
The BIA had submitted a letter requesting specific language. I don't know if you received that. I can pull it, about construction of housing and things like that. Do you think that we need to include that in our order?
Under the city's current order, construction of housing is an essential business. So I don't think that we need to amend the order.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
So another three parts of this, but we'll take them one at a time for motion purposes? No, I would say we take one at a time, yeah. Does that make sense? No, yeah, and then vote on each one, because there are three, if there are motions on the others. So this is a motion to adopt the resolution ratifying the city manager's local emergency declaration. So motion by Mayor Pro Tim Holstich, seconded by Councilmember Middleton.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Corse?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero to ratify the declaration.
Okay. The next item is a discussion item on discussion of economic measures to implement to support local businesses during the existence of a local emergency related to the increasing spread of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, and consideration of related actions. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council, you had requested that we bring this item forward just for some general discussion. What I would just note, I just want to make an opening comment here, and then Marcus Fuller and the Finance Director, Ms. Polly, will give you a little bit more information on the financial side. But I would just note that what's listed in the staff report are some ideas of a few of the kinds of things we could do, some obviously are larger than smaller. But the key thing is going to be, in our analysis of what this economic slowdown is going to do dealing with the virus, you know, we have a projection that by the end of the year, we potentially could be anywhere from $15 million to $20 million short of revenue. And so I think that needs to weigh on any discussion with regard to incentives. So I wanted to make sure that you had as much up-to-date information as we have at that point. And so what I would do, Marcus, if you could, and Nancy could sort of just walk through what we believe our projections are, and here's the interesting thing. The projections that we have at that level presumes that we're going to recover by the end of the year. So we're even being conservative. If it's a worse scenario, obviously, that number would be more on the negative side. Marcus, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Finance Director and I had to quickly come up with some, we're in uncharted waters with the shutdown of all of our businesses. So we, in an effort to be overly conservative, wanted to give the council and the public an idea of what we're looking at in terms of reduced revenues, given our tourism industry. And so I've prepared a few slides to highlight what was in the staff report. And our conservative assumptions at this point is that containment's going to be required through May, with recovery beginning in June, and stabilization to occur over the summer by September. As we know, the rescheduled major events are scheduled to be held in October and November, meaning that we would hopefully be normalized by the end of the year. And so knowing that, we wanted to show you that last year, March through December, so almost the full calendar year, these were our actual revenues. This is hotel occupancy tax, or TOT, is the first row. And then the second row is sales tax. That sales tax includes our normal sales tax, Measure D, but excludes Measure J. And so you can see there, the first, or March, April, and May, as we all know, are our peak season months. In fact, June, I could include June, but we're focusing on those three months. And you can see there, the total revenue is 20, over $20 million, just in those three months. For the 10-month period, March through December of last year, it was $41.7 million. So just in those three months, we get 50% of that revenue. So it demonstrates our peak season, as everybody understands. Now, in making some conservative assumptions, we're demonstrating this loss of activity in hotel occupancy, which is a direct correlation to what, you know, people here spending, enjoying our restaurants and our shops. So we have the same reductions in both TOT revenues and sales tax. So in that same three-month period, you can see a significant reduction, which was close to $20 million, and is now projected at $3.5 million for that three-month period of time, which is an, and for the, and then going through the duration of the calendar year, we're looking at almost $20 million total revenue, which is a $22 million loss from what we had last year. So we just needed to understand and come to a realization of how impactful this might be for a city like ours, which is really heavily reliant on tourism. And it's disturbing. And so in light of that, we wanted you to be aware if we're considering any local incentives or measures to provide to residents and business owners, because as I've outlined in the staff report, obviously, the federal and state government is doing everything they can to provide incentives and benefits and security for everyone affected by this unfortunate pandemic. And so that's the completion of that part of the presentation.
Just on that, just a couple of questions before we get into the things we could do if we had money to do it with section. So this is just TOT and sales tax, right? There are other way, revenue we bring in, right, tied to recording fees, transfer of properties, property taxes, all things it's reasonable believe are going to take a hit as well, correct?
That's correct.
So this is just a portion of what the downside is. And just, if you have on the top of your head, which I'm sure you probably live with every single day, to the city manager, the 22, and realistically, 25, maybe $30 million lost in this year, what in the recession was the amount lost in a year?
Yes. So basically, in the 2008, '09, '10 recession period, you know, we were, you know, four to seven at the worst, and I got to tell you, living through that, we laid off over 100 employees. That almost seems like a Sunday picnic compared to what we're looking at here. So that's what has me very concerned. And what this doesn't even project is, we're going to have increased expenses. So for example, our retirement CalPERS, you could expect that those costs are going to increase. Now, again, that will lag a couple of years behind, but we're going to have to start planning now, I suspect, for anticipated increases there as well.
Thank you.
I can add to that a bit. Right now, CalPERS, and we had a board meeting this week, it was a very truncated board meeting. Liquidity is very good. Staff has been planning for a downturn. There was absolutely no expectation that a market that had gotten up to 29,000 was going to stay there. So that is all to the good side. To the not-good side is, the projected rate of return is 7%. And every cost item that any municipality has is based on an expectation of a 7% rate of return. That is something that's taken in a broad number of years. It is not just simply a month-to-month decision. But if that expected rate of return changes, for every 25 basis points, for every quarter of percent that it would change downward, that would increase costs for local municipalities, for CalPERS, by 10%. And we are looking at a market that is, that has had tremendous change. And that 10% is an average, and it is based in part on no payroll growth. So for every dollar more that we have increased payroll, those costs can go up significantly more. The next CalPERS meeting is going to be mid-April, but the, I don't want to project one way or another as to where it will go, but the consequences of what's happening in the stock market are very significant, and it is only prudent to be watching it extremely closely.
Thank you. I would, you know, also, I know you pulled these together very fast, and we really appreciate that. But as you look at this, given the governor's order, I would think the sales tax and TOT may be hit even harder. If people can't even, may not even travel to see family, I mean, we're now in a different situation than we were two hours ago on that. And also, just, you know, by the next meeting, to really bring back some thoughts on extra costs. We know we're doing so many extra cleanings at public facilities, the airport, all of that is going on right now. We may need to hire extra support for the police department, whether private security or otherwise, with shuttered businesses and people not having money. So we need to think that we may have some extra expenses related to this. Whether there's going to be money for local governments and the federal or the state legislation that will help us through this, we don't know yet. And hopefully, we'll know more in the next week or two. So we need to think on the expense side may go up during this period as well. And, you know, if people get sick, including city staff, and there are essential functions, we're going to have to figure out how we get those done. So there are costs there as well. So just, I really appreciate you doing this so quickly, since our last meeting two days ago. And two weeks will give us a lot more information, I think. Mayor Pro Tim Holstich?
Thank you. Thank you. I agree. Thank you for pulling all of this together. I think these are wonderful ideas for us and programs for us to consider. I think we need a full discussion about our budget and the costs, and I know that'll take some time. You know, I was talking to the Desert Sun before I came here, and they asked me about this number, and what the projection is, and how we were reacting to that. Obviously, it's a shocking and devastating number, just like so many of our residents. People are really looking at nearly a complete loss of income during this time, and that's true almost for our city as well. And so we're all affected. We very much need the federal government and the state government to come in and save us here, us as individual renters, us as business owners, us as a city. Have we heard more about the local government emergency fund from the state and what they're offering and rolling out, or have they not given us more information about that?
We certainly are trying to get as much information as we can, and we're going to be very aggressive in reaching out to see how we get that. You know, some's going to be distributed to the counties, some right directly to local jurisdictions. So hopefully, by the time we come to our next meeting, we'll have a better handle on what those details are and how we might participate.
Thank you. I'm not that hopeful that the federal government will get it together soon enough to protect and provide a safety net for our residents. Hopefully, the state does. And so if there's any work we can do to advocate, I think that would be really important politically, because, you know, these two weeks, or three weeks, or longer, I'm really concerned that they've increased unemployment, but those systems are going to jam up. And so just thinking through, this is really helpful. I like a lot of these ideas for local businesses. I agree, we need to really look at our revenue streams and our whole budget together before we make these decisions. But I am really worried about just the people in our community who don't have money for food or medicine. So I've, I talked to the United Way, and they're starting an emergency crisis response fund for the Coachella Valley. I just saw that Lift to Rise is doing a fund for $250,000 for residents. So maybe we can work. In the meantime, I'll continue to send all the resources for our website to compile and share that information for residents, because this is a really dire time. And even, you know, for me, I'm in this projection too, for my personal income. I mean, we're all in it together. It's really devastating. Our country's never seen something like this. So I really, I really appreciate all this work. I think it's really important to consider supporting, you know, making sure our small businesses just don't close and never reopen, and that our residents don't go hungry. And like, what can we do in that meantime before the state and the federal government act? But I agree, we need a full accounting before we can do that.
Right. And then, there was a report this morning related to those issues from Find Food Bank, that, you know, they're operating, they, the food banks that we're part of are operating, most of the food banks in the city are operating. They're working to get extra food and looking for distribution sites, and the city is working with them on how we can maximize those as well. I think that's going to be really important for us. So if we can get that information on what they're doing and where their food is available, if we can add that to the website if it isn't, and also work with that, continue to work with them on another larger potential distribution site, that would be extremely helpful as well. Not everyone can afford to get, take out meals delivered, and some people don't have the means to do that. And we need to figure out how we can get food to them as well. And there are, you know, great agencies doing that work, but we need to make sure people know who they are and how to get in touch with them.
I agree. I do think when we do a holistic review of our budget, we should look at our grants and sponsorship money, which might be reduced, or our contingency funds, or any other pots of money that might be able for that crisis response. We already fund the food bank in a number of ways. We fund a lot of these nonprofit service providers. The problem is, the nonprofit service providers are also going to, you know, are looking at very little income during this time. So what can we do to help just the crisis response? And I know we're all doing that every day, working on that.
Right. And it's important, you know, organizations, healthcare organizations, Desert AIDS Project is doing a special clinic that they're trying to raise funds for. All the organizations are trying to do everything they can, but the reality is, some of them are going to see a cut in donations because people don't have the same money they had. And so, you know, that's all we really needed to figure out, what's in the state and federal bills, and get that out. And we've been doing that with the SBA loans and other things. And the more we can get out, the better.
I really want to commend staff for all of the work that's been done so very quickly and in the midst of this emergency. As we get a little bit more time over the next few weeks and month, we're going to need to step back and look at some of these projections, and then identify what some of our budget options are going to be as to what we can cut, what we can remove. But we've got a little bit of time before we have to do that, but not much.
I have a comment.
Sure, please.
Okay. So I understand that we need to look at...
So I, I understand that we need to look at everything and look at the budget, but I, I do want to be able to offer something now. And one of the things that I know that we received several comments from people talking about suspending the collection of city fees. And I'm not, I know that there's just so much that's been going on, so if this is, if we're already doing this with our city managers, then please let me know. But if we could prevent the collection of some of the city fees and just make sure that people understand that we're not going to be collecting unnecessary funds from them, that would be helpful. The other thing is Desert Community Energy is supposed to start April 1st, and people's bills are going to go up. And so I think we need to also address that.
So on the latter, you know, the city is doing an extra mailer that was finalized today that will let everyone know how they can choose to opt down to the Desert Saver Program, which will be slightly less expensive than the base rate in Edison. And, you know, the power's already been purchased by Desert Community Energy to provide it. But we do need to get that information out. And as far as fees, are there specific, obviously, we don't want to charge people fees that, for things they don't need, right? So do we know what those are? Do we have a list of those or anything?
If I can really quickly before you answer that. I agree about the user fees. I was looking in the staff report. It just says it across the board. Obviously, you had two days or a day to come up with this, and it's really excellent. Thank you. But I was also wondering that, are there specific fees? And it would be helpful for the public to let us know, too. What are those specific fees that we might be able to defer instead of, because the numbers look scary if you're doing it across the board, but obviously, that's not what we would do. Are there specific fees that, you know, you might include in here or that we can consider for two weeks from now?
Well, two that come into my, so for example, on the fees, some, some clearly are easier than others. For example, the TUMF fee, which is obviously a regional fee for, for local streets, we don't have the ability to reduce that. But ones that are discretion, such as, as the Quimby fee, which is for parks, right? The arts fees, which is for public art, you know, so parks and art. So those things clearly are more discretionary that the city, in a time of extreme emergency like this, certainly could waive. So there is a, a group of those that are more discretionary, so we certainly can provide that to council for continued discussion.
Those are more development fees for developments coming forward. I think Councilmember Garner, please let, let us know if you met specific fees, I think for residents versus development fees. Are there specific fees you're looking at?
Could you join, join, finance director? So Nancy, so that, that universe is things like business license, et cetera. Can you explain a little, a few of those?
Well, in, in here, there was a suggestion to reduce business license and do it for a holiday. The average business license fee is $160, so that would be one of the options. We could go through and give you a list of fees that we would recommend, the city manager could recommend for residents to reduce at this point. We'd have to go through the list of those.
So it's like business fees, then, then for, you know, the average homeowner, there are inspection fees, things of that nature. But again, those will all then go to the bottom line of, of the, the revenue we get, for example, on inspection fees for the, the fire department. So, so, you know, those are the things we do have discretion on, but then they have consequences on the other side of the, of the revenue.
So the business license fee, if we suspended it for a year, it'd be a $1 million loss of revenue?
Correct.
Right. So I think what we need to, so is that, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Garner.
I mean, I'm thinking more code enforcement, parking, but then also with Desert Community Energy, I really feel like we need to make a strong stance that we're not going to be turning off anybody's electricity. This might seem right, of course we're not, but I think we need to make sure people understand that if they don't pay their bill on time right now, that they're still going to have electricity.
Yes, so that's all, that piece is all handled by Edison, Edison, the billing and everything, and they've already said that, is my understanding. SEC has said no one is going to be disconnected as a result. I'd like to-
Okay, great. I think we just, people are confused.
No. Understood. So I will, I will reach out to the DCE staff and confirm and make sure that gets included. In fact, the city manager, that mailing hasn't been printed yet. We just approved the content. So if we can make sure people know that in here, that's important. One side's going to be English, one's in Spanish, and it's very basic. It explains what the rate difference is, how to opt down, and I think this would be an important piece to include as well.
Another option could be possibly if we don't charge late fees for a certain period of time and penalties, that would be an option also, especially for some of the hotels or, or just customers, if they have accounts receivable and not bill them, and you have the late fees for a couple of months, that's also an option. But we'd be, we'd be happy to provide you with a list of all the options for the residents.
I would-
The late fees would be really important, I think.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a list and of everything that we've got. Where I think we want to be helpful is with those individuals who, who need the help, the businesses that are, have been shuttered and that are really trying to survive, and residents who are living on very fixed incomes and just do not have the capacity to, to absorb the kind of loss of employment that they're seeing now.
Yeah. And I think, you know, tied into that, which I think Councilmember Garner said, but things like parking tickets, things like that, you know, any information we can get on that, what we want to do, we're going to have a lot less issues with trying to get cars to move so people can get into businesses that are closed. So how that works, do we eliminate our parking enforcement program, right? And what does the contract say that we can do and, right? Do we have a force majeure provision in that? So let's really try and be as creative as we all can and with ideas, send them to the city manager, so we can really bring forward all of them and really think about, you know, some of it, we might save some expenses, which, as well, such as on parking and things along those lines. But obviously, you know, people who are really struggling, being hit with a parking ticket and things like that, people will have a harder time moving their car. I don't know if the state's going to change its 72-hour rule on people not moving cars. So that's all information we still need to collect, and I think the best thing is to bring as much as we can back to really evaluate, and so we have a sort of menu of options.
Can I also maybe add one thing to that?
Please.
I, I would really like to see all of this in terms of what we could do starting today. So if we're going to look at this in two weeks, what about everything that happens in this two weeks, this next two-week period? So I want to be able to see the numbers on if we waived parking tickets, et cetera, you know, for these last weeks and not just starting on the day that we review this stuff.
Yeah. I mean, we could look at going backwards on it for sure, right? There's no reason we couldn't do that. I ask the city manager. You could be retroactive to when we did our declaration on Tuesday, correct?
Yes, yes. That, because there's a lag time. Now, if someone obviously pays a parking ticket immediately, but, but there's generally a lag time. And now, we can administratively do certain things and then get council's ultimate approval on it. But I think what I'll, what we can do is we're going to get a list of fees, everything there, and I'm going to get it out to council, and then I'll have some recommendations, and there's some things that we might be able to do administratively before the next meeting that I think will get us a little bit closer to what Councilmember Garner is requesting.
Councilmember Woods?
I think that what we need to be doing is really retooling and really advocating for the federal and the state governments and being, one, advocate for the programs that they're currently proposing, such as immediate unemployment, things of that nature, and helping people get access to those particular tools that are being set up. I think the funding sources from the state and federal are much stronger than our funding sources here with the resort community that we're in. And I think, especially with what we saw our potential hit may be, and for the services that our citizens require, I think we really need to be looking at these outside agencies and then being a conduit between them and our citizens that need the assistance. And that's where I'd like to see us focus our energy.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I have a question. So we got a lot of questions about due dates or deadlines for bills or fees from this, by the city. I think April 1st is a number of people's deadlines. Could you tell us a little bit about what we would be collecting? I am nervous, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Garner, that two weeks for people is like life or death for literally residents or for businesses who are, I'm getting calls from businesses who say, I have a $40,000 tax bill due, you know, and I can't pay it, I don't have overheads. So I have, you know, what, what do we need to do there? What are the deadlines coming up for people that we should consider now?
The only deadlines that I'm aware of currently are, are taxes that are due to the city, the cannabis tax and the TOT taxes. There's, I'm not aware of anything that's due to the city by April 1st. All taxes are due at the last business date of each month, and that's the only thing I'm aware of.
Yeah, and those TOT hotel taxes, those would be actually taxes that they would have collected for the city. So technically, they couldn't spend that for their own purposes or business operations, even if they wanted to. That, that would be certainly the opposite of what that intention is. And, and the thing that concerns me there is that, now, you certainly could, could waive a penalty if they're a week or two weeks late. Now, that, that's the easy thing, but, but I think to forgive that for any length of time, I, I think it would be hard for a hotel even down the road to make that up. So then, then we'd be in the position of not being able to collect or chasing them. So the, the penalty is one thing. That, that's an easy thing to waive, but the, the tax itself would be much more difficult.
Yeah. So let's look at that. Obviously, those were collected from other people, right, on our behalf. You know, if anything, they would go back to those people. So, yeah, I think we definitely need to really look at that as part of this, and what those numbers would be, if it's even something council wants to consider.
So the end of the month, so that's the 31st of this month, or?
Whatever the last working day, business working day of the month is falls upon, it would be the Thursday, the last Thursday of the month, 26th.
So in a week?
31st? The 31st.
And that's for TOT and cannabis taxes from February, or?
Correct.
And those, TOT was collected by the hotels from visitors?
Correct.
And then cannabis taxes, that would be the sales tax or the other taxes collected from buyers to go for that purpose?
That's correct.
Okay. And no other fees or fines, like the business fees? People were asking me about the business fees, the annual business fee permit due to this license.
That's a business license?
When are those due?
They vary, depending on when you, you, they're prorated depending on when you set your business up or got your, begin, your first business license. The renewals happen once a year.
On their anniversary.
That's correct.
So probably a small portion are due right now, but we are, people are affected by that.
And the average is about $160 per license.
Yeah. Okay, that's helpful. I just, I would like to take immediate action on this. It's really difficult to do right now without a full accounting of how that'll affect us and what we'll actually be able to provide. So I think that we need that and, you know, know that this is an urgent item, and we have to really protect our businesses and our residents.
I'd be happy to get the business license renewal list to you for the ones that are coming up, so you have an idea of how many renewals are coming up in the next couple of months?
Yep, that would be helpful. And I would just like to suggest at our next council meeting that as part of this item, we also maybe do, or the beginning, a presentation of everything that's available to businesses and residents financially through federal, state, county programs. I think really getting that out there in a broad way that's televised, that we could then keep running on Channel 17 and have links on our website and in social media. There are a lot of programs that are more coming, just looking at what's in that federal bill, and the more we can educate the public on those, the better. Because I agree with Councilmember Woods, you know, that is a service we can do. It's not a costly thing for us to do, doesn't mean we don't do more, but getting that information out and being in that conduit, people are just much more comfortable working with their city government at the local level than they are trying to deal with the federal government. And to the extent we could be that conduit and help people and be able to answer questions for them, if we have staff, you know, that was doing things that they're not doing now, and that would always be really helpful. It's really easy for folks to reach us, and I think they feel much more comfortable reaching us than trying to reach the state or the federal government.
I agree. I think it's a great idea, and I wonder if we can invite other agencies. So I know Desert Water Agency has made a lot of changes, you know, SCE, Edison, Palm Springs Disposal Service, all of them could come or at least give information for a PowerPoint to us about, because I think residents, there's getting different information, and they're really afraid of these bills that are coming. So compiling all of that from the agencies would be helpful, too.
And some of the county agencies that deal, that have been helpful with unemployment, who have come to our, our meetings on business retention, economic development. And let's also have, with Edison, have DCE, the gas company, you know, they can all do just a few, two minutes each, just explaining what their programs are. We could ask questions, and it'll really be something that'll be helpful long-term throughout this.
The federal government has delayed the need to file taxes and pay taxes for 90 days. One of the next big dates coming up on anyone's radar is April 10, when county taxes are due, and it would certainly be helpful if the county were in a position to, to take the same kind of action that the federal government has taken.
I believe the state has done the same for tax filings. Great. Okay. Thank you. Anything else on that? Or we'll move to the next item, which is a temporary moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent during COVID-19 pandemic. Staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is a, a proposed temporary moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent during COVID-19 pandemic. It's a proposed urgency ordinance that would essentially provide that a tenant in either a residential or a non-residential unit, for example, commercial or industrial, would be allowed to temporarily forego payment, and the landlord would be prevented from instituting a eviction process if that tenant can demonstrate that their inability to pay was due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And the various types of causes for that could be loss of income, having to stay at home and care for themselves or family members. It should be noted that this ordinance is modeled after an ordinance and some emergency declarations that other cities have considered or adopted, including Santa Monica and Sacramento. Some cities have adopted it by emergency declaration, other cities have adopted it by ordinance. This proposal is to, is to consider a proposed ordinance as opposed to a simple declaration. Finally, it should be noted that the ordinance does not propose to fully forgive the tenant from paying rent. Instead, it provides that the tenant would be required to pay their rent within six months following the end of the local declaration of emergency. So it's not as though the tenant would be entirely forgiven from having to pay their rent. It would provide that violation of this ordinance would be a defense to a tenant in any eviction action. And I would finally note two points. One is the California and federal courts are very much constrained by the, by the pandemic themselves, and so to a large extent, certainly in the state court, only very crucial court actions are being moved forward. They have all but closed court case, court, courtrooms at this point. And then secondarily, it is possible that action could be taken at either the state or federal level to cover this. So the city council might want to consider that as well. So that concludes my presentation. I'm certainly available to answer any questions you may have.
Sure. Go ahead. Mayor Protim Holstich? Sure. I just want to ask, so we heard public comment, you know, and I've, we've received public comment, and I've received calls. Landlords in commercial buildings, a number of them that reached out, said they're all currently working with their tenants, because having a tenant who can work on a payment plan versus getting rid of someone and having to find a tenant in this- and having to find a tenant in this economic environment didn't make a lot of sense. That said, there are definitely some small businesses who are really concerned. They can't pay their rent and could be evicted. At this point, we have no knowledge of anything at the state or federal level yet. I believe New York's doing some stuff where people don't have to pay their mortgages during this. Because one of the concerns, of course, is we don't want, you know, if the landlord has the building foreclosed, it doesn't do a lot of good for the tenant. And so what does that look like? And what power do we have on that, if any?
Correct. Nothing has been done formally at either the state or federal level. There has been talk in other states, including New York, as you mentioned, about, about temporarily halting foreclosures, but there's nothing formal at this point.
And there's no power we have on any of that authority that we could do, even in an emergency? Or is there?
It, it's, it's possible, although it's, it's a lot, a lot riskier, I think, than, than the landlord-tenant relationship.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I have a follow-up question if I can. I did see, and I know there's been a lot of confusion on this issue because I even read headlines that the governor had done this. But really, what the governor had done for the state of California is just authorize local governments to do this, which is not quite the action that we needed to protect all of our tenants in our state. And now it comes to us. So I thought I had seen that they took action or authorized something on mortgages. Is that not correct?
The HUD has taken limited action to, to, to limit foreclosures on HUD insured mortgages, yes, but not, not on evictions.
Okay, thank you. I have more questions and comments, but I'll let my colleagues go.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes. I'm not sure you'd be able to answer this question, but the process for evicting someone either in commercial or residential is a long process. Can, approximately how long in?
It can easily take six months to get the judgment of eviction. And then you have to go through the process of getting, executing on that, which could be another couple of months. So, so yes, it can be a fairly lengthy process.
Could I respond really quickly? I'm sorry, after you're done. I want to respond. I was an eviction defense attorney. I've done dozens and dozens of eviction defense cases for low-income people. The pro, and I thought about that, too. The problem is, even with the courts being closed, this doesn't solve, that doesn't solve the issue because the maj, vast majority of tenants are evicted informally by getting an eviction notice. Most people are going to comply. There's no, essentially very little legal aid here, and so they don't have access to an attorney. So the problem is landlords just issuing the eviction notice, and that then sets in motion most people leaving or getting evicted. People say that. Being evicted means going through the formal process, but that process doesn't happen in a huge majority of cases.
That helps. And what I'm trying to get at is if we're trying to address individuals that are facing eviction because of something that happened beyond their control related to the coronavirus, that's one thing. If it is an individual for which an eviction action has been pending for a very long period of time, that is completely unrelated to, then I'm not necessarily unsympathetic, but I don't think we should be using the coronavirus to address those issues, which, and we can do this when we get to comment, raises a question in my mind as to whether or not we need to act on this this evening as opposed to at our next meeting or sometime after that.
Councilmember Woods?
I would echo Councilmember Middleton. I would also ask again, what I said before is, I understand there are potential loans at the state and federal level for people that might be in an eviction situation or in a bad, in a situation where they might lose their business. Again, if we can be a conduit, get more information on those type of loans and make them, and help any of our struggling tenants accessible to those loans, I think would be very helpful. And I think that would be probably a stronger response than actually what's before us here.
Councilmember Garner, do you want to weigh in?
Sure.
I figured.
So I, my concern with waiting is that people really want something now. They want answers now. They're scared now. And I understand that we don't necessarily have to have something full or complete, but, but I think that we should do something to put people at ease. And maybe it's, it's not exactly what was in front of us right now, but, but to be able to do something to make renters feel like they're going to be okay is important, but to also make sure that landlords understand that we are thinking of them, too.
Yeah. I mean, I think that this is, this is a challenge, of course, and we're trying to do this on the fly. And, but especially in the residential situation, right, people who have no income and have to pay rent come April 1st, I think, don't know what they're supposed to do. And, you know, the way this is written, you know, any economic impact, well, everyone is having an economic impact. This would cover everyone. And so if even people who have the means don't pay rent, we're going to have a problem with, you know, the people who have the mortgages not being able to pay them. So I wish we could do it in some kind of threshold level. I have no idea of a plan for that, but that's my concern. Because really, the way this is written, it does apply to everyone because people of means who have any money or any worker who's ever had, has a retirement account has seen that number drop, has seen the value drop, you know, 30%. So do you have any ideas? Have you ever seen anything where there's some kind of true means testing? Or, you know, maybe what we do is we do two weeks on residential until we can see what's happening at the state and federal level? Because I do know also from legal practice long ago, when people get an eviction notice, they think, they, they think that's it. That looks like a legal notice when that's on your door or you're served with it.
In answer to your question, I haven't seen a whole lot of other models. This is the model that has been circulating most prevalently over the last few days. And literally, it has just been the last few days that cities have been reacting to it over this past weekend. But we can certainly look and see if there are other models that are a little bit more targeted.
Because if, you know, we have more people lose their place to live, we have a worsening public health crisis and a lot of additional costs and health issues and sickness and death.
Would it be possible to look at something where we say you cannot evict for failure to pay rent in the month of April of, of this year for a residence over the next two weeks, giving ourselves an opportunity to see what the state and the federal government is going to do, providing some assurance to residents? But if the eviction action is based on failure to pay previous to April 1st of this year, which would be largely previous to this emergency, that those actions can go forward, at least as far as we're concerned?
Are you done? I might, I might.
Yeah, go ahead. Do you have a motion on your mic?
And doing that right off the top of my head, but.
Yeah. What I might propose, and I, I asked for this to come forward, I, I support taking action that's, that protects residents and tenants and also small businesses. I wish that we could do more on mortgages to make it fair. I hope and predict, I, I really think the state will do this on mortgages and eviction. Otherwise, we're going to see, I mean, if 56% of Californians are going to get the virus, those people aren't going to be able to pay their bills. So I might propose a two-week moratorium instead of this ordinance. I agree with you. We went to the same law school. I agree. I don't like how the written ordinance is written. I think it says some or all of the rent. It doesn't specify any threshold amount, which maybe is difficult, but I agree. I wrote in my margin, this is probably going to apply to everyone. So, you know, it says within 90 days after the date the rent is due. I don't know if that's the proper amount of time. You know, it says must pay within six months. I think that's probably too long of a time for landlords to go without that income. So I might propose four months or a process for mediation. You know, what we want is, you know, we could even think about limits on like mom and pop landlords or something like that. Because, you know, we want to, we want to ask our landlords, property owners, to work with their tenants and keep people in their homes and keep people in their commercial spaces. That's what we want to protect. So I might, I think that the ordinance is vague. I might propose, I would propose that we have a two-week moratorium based on what we, just an order, or you got it from direction, if we could do that, that other cities had done, as opposed to passing this full ordinance. This ordinance also applies to May 31st, but I think that it's changing rapidly and the state and federal government might do this for mortgages and, and rentals. So can we do something for a short period of time, for two weeks, to protect people and make sure that we don't have, you know, thousands of people homeless in the next two weeks? And then we could actually consider a more robust policy with more time at our next meeting.
The, the city council could limit the, the time period of this for the next two weeks, for example, and leave open the option of then extending it, should the council wish to do so. I heard some concerns, though, also about the categories of what qualifies as financial impacts related to, to the COVID-19 crisis. And so if you, if you're looking to, to, to narrow that as well, or are you just doing, looking to, to have a more limited time period?
Right. I agree with the categories. So like number two is a layoff, loss of hours or other income reduction resulting from business closure, other economic or employer impacts of COVID-19. That's anything. So I think that that's over broad. I mean, we do want to be broad. We want to protect as many people as possible. I, I think that's the category that we would, on further review, might specify more clearly because it, we need to give guidance to landlords and renters. I, I hear the landlords that are going to say, you know, people, you know, won't pay rent at all with this if it's too broad. And that's important, too.
Councilmember Woods?
I'm a little concerned about the, the pathway or the trajectory that we're going. We do not have a rent stabilization department in the city. We do not, we have an appeals board, but we don't have appeals aboard over things like people not being evicted and whatnot. So if this, does this go to a court of law? You know, where, where actually is this going to be playing out with enforcement and all of that? So it just seems a little premature to me at this point, until we can get some of those kind of questions answered or ironed out.
Yeah. I mean, one of the questions I had, which is, it's not going to stop a landlord from putting an eviction notice on and trying to hope that people just leave as on their own. I mean, that's where, this is really tricky. It, it does need to happen at the state level, but we also want to make sure, you know, no one's not evicted because they don't have money to pay rent in April, although people usually have more than one day to get the rent in. And we're meeting on April 2nd. But I, I know people are nervous and understandably.
I know folks are nervous and, and I want to be supportive. I, I'm struggling to understand how someone, over the course of the next two weeks, would be evicted for an event that are, took place after the coronavirus hit. That really starts to be actions that we can anticipate will be happening in April and May. But we still have two more weeks to gather information and see where the federal and state government is without having to jump into this today. But I'm, I do not want to see individuals losing their commercial or their residential place as a result of the coronavirus. So we, I'm prepared to take action. I'm just very reluctant to do it tonight as opposed to gathering more information and doing it, looking at this again in two weeks.
I have a comment.
Yep, please.
So I, I agree with Mayor Protem Holstich that we should consider a moratorium for two weeks. And the reason for that is that there are people who maybe have been in situations in the last couple of months where they are on the brink of eviction. And I understand that's not coronavirus-related. However, we don't need people to be evicted right now while they're in the pandemic going on. So that's why, because we need to make protections right now, because there are people for many other reasons that we need to protect and we need to keep off this street at this moment. And we're not here to make a judgment or call about why they haven't paid their rent up until this point. But we are trying to do this for the greater good, to protect our healthcare workers, to protect our public safety officers, to protect all of them. But I think that's what we're, we need to be thinking about right now, is that there are people who are on the brink of being evicted and they do deserve protection. We have to be thinking about the humanity and our repres.
So I created a, oh, are you done? Sorry, Councilmember Garner.
I'm done.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I created a form to request assistance, just financial assistance or other assistance online to ask our neighbors if they need help. I got a lot of responses asking for financial assistance, some of from my friends who are hospitality workers or contract workers or entertainers. In our city, people already have gone maybe a week without income from those events and things like that. So I personally know dozens of people, if not more, who cannot pay their, cannot buy food this week, let alone their rent, you know, in a week and a half. I mean, it's, it's devastating. Most people, 40%, you know, majority of Americans can't afford a $400 emergency. This is a $400 emergency. Majority of our workers are wage workers and the industries that are now shut down. So it truly is, I think we have to act tonight to protect people, or I think we will get a lot of people evicted on, on April 1st. Or, and we say evicted by get a notice of eviction. People have different deadlines. A lot of people are month-to-month in this city and don't have term rent leases. And so a lot of people might have different days of their deadlines of their leases, too. So I appreciate that. I would like more information. I would like to be able to protect everyone and their mortgages, too. Unfortunately, we're not the state and we can't do everything, but I do think we should do what we can just to prevent. That's a public safety crisis and a public health crisis. If thousands of people are going to get eviction notices and in my experience, representing those people, most people get the notice and then they leave and they live in their car.
So let me ask this. If, if, if we go down that route, if that's the decision of council, we don't have the tools to enforce it, obviously, right? It's a defense for folks. We have limited legal aid. So making sure that we get whatever legal aid information, the bar association, you know, I know some attorneys who don't have any work who might, you know, be working with the bar association. I mean, this may be symbolic more than anything, but it may send a message to landlords. I get that. But making sure we at least get information, whether this passes tonight as for two weeks until we come back or not, figuring out, you know, we do fund some organizations to do housing issues and making sure that we get that information out to tenants in whatever ways we can is going to be really important. So people have someone to call if they do get an eviction notice.
Yeah.
Letting them know who that is. Letting them know who that is.
I think the problem that this moratorium solves is preventing eviction notices from going out. I agree with you that there's limited enforcement ability, and with the courts closed and with probably legal aid closed pretty soon, people aren't going to have options. One compromise or one idea might be, I know our city used to offer mediation services between landlords and tenants through our Human Rights Commission, and we have someone on staff who used to do that for the Human Rights Commission. And so, I mean, that's voluntary, and so, you know, the thing is, good landlords will do what they can to help their tenants. Bad landlords will take advantage of that, slum lords will take advantage of the system and just evict people they're not going to participate in a voluntary, you know, mediation. However, I mean, we could think about options like that of our city staff to support tenants or landlords or businesses who might have disputes or might ask for, you know, request delays on their rent from people, from their landlords. I'm just trying to brainstorm out loud since it doesn't, sounds like we don't have consensus.
Something to look into at least for two weeks, but if there are, if there are, whatever resources exist, as limited as they are here for tenants, regardless of where this goes tonight, I think we should do that, unless there's a lot more comment. I mean, is there a motion on?
I think the idea of mediation is a really good one, and that we require that the landlord and tenant agree to mediation.
I know we have a lot of appeals board members who are out of work.
Yeah. I mean, it's hard to require them to do mediation when we don't have a mediation service.
Yeah, I.
We would like them to do it, but I don't know that we can require it.
I know, but it.
Yeah, but I appreciate the concept. So are you writing a motion? Are you scribbling a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Let's see where we are.
Your mic.
Thanks. Pressed the wrong button.
And I should point out that this is an urgency ordinance, and so in order for it to be passed tonight, it requires a four-fifths vote.
You can make one, and if it doesn't, you can always make two.
And do you have a recommendation here about my two? I'd like to make a motion that we do a moratorium for two weeks until the next council meeting where we can consider a full ordinance. And so how would I, how would we do that? Because that's different than what was presented.
Right, in section 1A of the ordinance, this is on page four, it would read, "Not withstanding anything to the contrary in the Palm Springs Municipal Code, during the two-week period following the date of the adoption of this ordinance, no landlord shall," and it would continue on.
So I make the motion to approve that language.
Can I ask a question on that? Well, just in case we have to change the motion. But that, would that still mean you don't have, April 1st rent wouldn't be due for six months? Would all those other provisions apply? Or would this just be no eviction?
Notice that.
So the ordinance prohibits the service of a three-day notice. So it says you can't provide that three-day, even the three-day notice that Councilmember Holstich mentioned. The issue is, the landlord first has to know of the tenant's inability to pay the rent, and the ordinance as it's drafted says, "Within 90 days after the day the rent is due." And so that's a very long time period that lags past the time period within which the tenant might receive that notice. So we'd have to change that language as well, I think, to say that the landlord has to know prior to taking action.
Would it, just, I think what you're trying to get at, so let me, if I'm wrong, please correct me, would be a two-week moratorium on eviction notices for failure to pay rent.
Because of the COVID-19.
Right, right, related to it. You don't have to have all the reasons because if we don't then do something in two weeks, they'd still owe their April rent, right? So we're not saying that rent isn't due for months and months. It's just a two-week more, is that what you're going for?
Right. That's what I was trying to request, because I don't like how the ordinance is written in a number of ways.
That's really a two-week moratorium that no one can be evicted for failure to pay rent, and they don't have to prove why. I mean, it's two weeks. They still, no one's going to have that, right? Because by April 2nd, they probably won't have to, rent will be due on the 1st, but it won't have to be collected. So at least people know they're not going to be, they can't get an eviction notice for two weeks, and that would be a defense if anyone did. Is that what you're trying to do?
Yes, thank you.
Does that make sense, City Attorney?
Yep, we can draft that.
So I want to make sure I understand what we're doing here. We are not adopting the ordinance as was proposed. We are simply putting a pause for two weeks on the ability of a landlord to issue a new eviction notice if there was a failure to pay based on the coronavirus.
Yes.
And it is so, and it's limited to that very small window.
Councilmember Woods.
You know, I don't think that's completely out of step. You know, there are moratoriums on evictions if you're chronically ill, you know, things of that nature already that exist out there that we could, we could model, that have a proven track history and probably has a proven history in court as well. So, you know, two weeks to give somebody who might be fearful and are unsure where they're going to be, I could support a two-week thing.
And I, you know, the thought of anyone being on the street because they don't have money right now is just unacceptable. I think two weeks gives us time to figure out what the state and federal government doing, and if we do need to step in and craft something, lets us have the time to work on that. So, you know, so we need a second, since there is a motion on the floor by Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Garner.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Yes.
Mayor Coors.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Is there more? I have no idea what's next. That's the last item. So now we go to, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items? We do, so the city clerk is in the process of calling people.
Hello.
Hello, Darrell Terrell.
This is E.
You have two minutes to make your public comment.
Okay. This is a sobering moment in history. I know many of you, my brothers and sisters, and my brothers and sisters are scared, but you are not alone, are not alone in this, in this crisis. And because we're all in this together as one people and one community, we will get through this together because we're a family. It can be easy to give in to fear. Our city is not defined by that, but by possibility and hope. And when we see a problem and we see a challenge, then we fix it. We don't just react based on our fears, we react based on our facts, judgments, and making smart decisions. That's why our community has defined progress, because we're not afraid when challenges come up. When there's a big challenge, we hear somebody saying it's too hard to tackle, then we, we come together as a community and prove them wrong. That's true whether it's a depression, a recession, or war, or terrorism. We master that moment with bravery and courage and selfishness and, and sacrifice and relentlessness and unbound and hope. That's how we are going to get through this, and we are going to get through it together because we don't quit and we don't succumb to fear. Whenever times have seemed at their worst, we have been at our best. That's when we remember the fundamental truth of our history. We are strong when we are united. Our path is harder, but it leads to a better place. Yes, our road is longer, but we travel it together. We don't turn back, and we don't leave no one behind. We pull each other up, and we hold fast to that truth. In this moment of trial, there's no.
Mr. Trail?
Yes.
Your time is up.
Well, thank you for giving me the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye-bye.
Okay. City manager, city council requests. I think you have requests for, I mean, I think what we talked about on Tuesday was to really focus these meetings on truly critical issues, things that can't wait or that need to move forward, as well as issues relating to our response to this emergency.
Well, in particular, with the upcoming meeting schedule, and I'm going to ask Jay Barada, he, our community development director, to join us, because there's a question with regard to the CDPG program public hearings, in terms of what our requirement is and the timeframe. So I'd like him to explain that so we can adjust that schedule as need be. Also, the orchery is planned to matriculate out of the planning commission and come to us next meeting. So those are the two items. The other items that you see upcoming, the various stages, we certainly can postpone the majority of them. You've already postponed the noise ordinance study session the end of this month. So with that, Jay, could you join us? Could you please explain the timelines? Given the new model of block grant that the council has asked us to go to, what exactly you need on the CDPG public hearing and when? And what latitude do we have to modify?
What we had originally planned for was on April 2nd, excuse me.
You were running up the hall, weren't you?
Public hearing, and for the first reading, and a May 7th second hearing for the second public hearing on CDPG. But.
Sorry, just take a breath.
In light of.
It's okay.
No, I'm fine. Oh, no, I'm fine, thank you. In light of the circumstances, HUD has extended the con plans of middle to August. And so if we have public hearings where we can't get full participation, it might be a good idea to hold off, or we can still move forward.
Yeah, so I have a question. If we delay moving forward several months, we delay getting funding, I presume?
I believe that would be correct.
And given our changes in how we're doing it, my inclination would be we want to move forward and just make sure we're doing the outreach on how people can do public comment, but just open to other ideas. Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
I completely agree. I think we want to seek all federal funding and be first to, in line for all those federal funds before it's gone, maybe forever. So I think we should go forward. I think we really, this is teaching us how to better use technology to involve people, and I think we can do that electronically and, you know, as long as we, you know, do everything we can to get public input, but I think the sooner the better.
Anyone have a different view? Okay.
And then. So just to recap, then, the hearing will go forward on April 2nd?
That's correct. We requested the notice be published, and I'm not sure if you have, okay. So we went ahead to have the notice published, so that will go out next Tuesday, I believe. And so that would clear the path for having the public hearing on April 2nd.
And on the orchery, that would, we would think would come back on the April 2nd as well?
Yes, Flynn, are you listening?
There are two.
He's there.
Take your time. While we're waiting on that, can we also bring a discussion item, discussion direction on whether we want to extend the terms of board and commissioners, given we can't do interviews right now, it might be by phone, but at least, at least figure, let's have a discussion on how we want to do that, because that's going to be coming up. We'd be doing that now, and the recruitment process and our attempts to continue to recruit people to the boards and commissions is really going to be stymied by this. So just as an item for discussion direction, I think would be good. Dr. Fag, welcome.
Thank you. So on the orchery, the planning commission is scheduled to reconsider the item on the 25th, so next Thursday. They saw the item about a week and a half ago on March 11th, had some concerns, requested that the applicant bring back additional information. So if they do take action on the 25th, then it would be ready to come forward to you on April the 2nd.
So you, we'd be able to turn the staff report around for the 26th?
Yeah, we could.
Okay, and neighbors have been notified?
Neighbors have been notified. However, if you would like to have a little bit of room in between the planning commission hearing on the 25th and the next council meeting, that would put us on the April 23rd agenda.
April 23rd.
My only concern is, we have really tight timelines on that project, and if he's moving forward, we want to move forward. But is there any reason we can't do a notice to folks af, I mean, the official notice is already out, but mail to the people in that area and through the tennis club, neighborhood organization, how to do public comment?
Yes, we can.
I mean, that, as long as we're doing that, I'm comfortable moving forward. I just want, you know, as long as we give people that extra information on how they can email and how they could call in, so people know that ahead of time.
Okay.
I think that would be fine with me, if anyone disagrees. Okay, thank you. City manager.
That's all that I had. Mayor?
So with that, I think the last comment is, you know, we will figure this out, we're working hard, everyone's working hard. Councilmember Woods.
Just a little point of levity for the evening of what we did tonight. One, I want to thank our library staff very much for putting online, it's very heartening to hear that so many people signed up for a library card. I think that's absolutely fantastic. If you feel you need a hard book, I just want to let you know that Racket Club West was approved tonight to put up the mini libraries. So take a walk solo to get your exercise and walk through Racket Club West if you've never done it, and pick up a book from one of the mini libraries.
Real books. That's pretty cool. Okay, thank you. And just mostly, you know, I think people are going to get on short fuses very easily right now. People are under a lot of stress and just, you know, try and be kind to each other. I think everyone's going through a really difficult time now, and we're going to all do best if we're kind and take care of each other. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Thursday, April 2nd, at 6:00 PM. Good night, everyone.